So I am calling the City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 22, 2019 to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like the Chair of several of our committees, Peter Taylor, to lead us in the pledge, please.
I declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Kevin Dorn will instruct us on how to leave the building if need be due to an emergency.
If we have an emergency this evening, please proceed immediately out of one of these two side doors and gather in the parking lot just to the south. If these doors are for some reason blocked, please go back out into the main lobby, out the front door, around the building, and back into the same lot on the south side. Tom Hubbard and I will be responsible for making sure that the building is cleared.
All right. Thank you. And item number three is the agenda review. Any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items? Okay, the only thing I see, and somehow we need to get it back into our regular agendas, is the committee reports. Is, do you have one for tonight?
I think they're at the...
Always happy to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't think of any.
I had it in the, at the end.
Always happy to.
You're always happy to? And the Pension Advisory, you're going to probably have a lot to say tonight, so...
Well, they're going to, but they'll be here soon.
Right.
They're dining.
Okay. Did you have anything to report as a committee?
No, we just got an overview for, you know, the closeout of 2018.
Okay.
And a little update up through like January 17th, which makes it look a little bit better, you know, because the markets have come back a little bit, but they'll, they'll give you the overview, so.
Okay.
I don't want to be redundant.
Well, how about the IZ committees? You were at the TDR meeting, I was at the Open Space meeting. I think it would be great for us to give an update on what we did last week.
Sure.
Yes? And then if we have something from GMT, that would be great. So could we put that, perhaps, what's your pleasure? We have moved these things to the end of the agenda.
Just move it to the end.
All right. So under other business, then, we could do the committee reports? Okay. So that's item number 15. All right, very good. So now we're on to item number four, and that's comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to come forward? All right. Seeing none, we'll keep going. And we have announcements in the City Managers' Report. And we'll start here with Tom.
Nothing comes to mind, I will say. One question that a resident called me about during this snowstorm, and I didn't have an answer, and maybe we can redirect this, or I should have sent it via email, but regarding studded snow tires, I don't think there's an ordinance on it, but she wanted to know if there's generally guidance from the city, if we don't prefer studded snow tires, if they're known to be a hazard for our streets. I didn't know how to respond, but maybe I'll send a follow-up email. And I think I saw some posts on Facebook about this, too.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Tim?
Let's see, so I was at a TDR meeting last week. Last Friday, I was in MMI interview at Lerner College in Edison again. And I attended the SBVA last week in the morning at Latch and Supply.
Did you learn anything new? I was, I was sorry I wasn't able to make...
Yeah, I did. So they had an interesting, so Karen Stackpole, the lawyer, presented about the marijuana policy and the legalization of marijuana, or the decriminalization and the effect on employers, right? So just reinforcing the fact that if, if an employer already had a marijuana policy outlawing possession, transfer, sale, intoxication by that, whatever, in the workplace, right? Or coming to the workplace, that policy would still be legal and, and was grounds for dismissal. We did cover a couple interesting pieces where with CBD, if you were, if you had a full-spectrum CBD product, it could render you a neg, you know, a positive on a drug test for trace amounts of THC, right? Because there's very little THC in that industrial hemp that they process for CBD. So there was a mild warning, and it might require a conversation with a potential, with an applicant, you know, for that company. So actually, I went into the Sears store on College Street and asked them about that some more, and got a little bit more information. So just interesting aspect of our changing marijuana landscape.
I'd seen it was about the mental health initiative. Did you discuss that, too?
I left before Kevin gave an update on that. I didn't get a tour of the building, which is unfortunate, because it's rather cool when I was on the DRB when we approved that change.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right. We'll have to go back. David?
Not much in the, I mean, it's only been a week. Not, not much in the last week. Schools, schools cranking up, as you and Tom know all too well. And that consumed the entirety of the week. I don't really think there was anything, anything else, really, at all. It was a UVM week.
Yes, very good. All right. The only thing that I wanted to put forward publicly, and I shared it with Kevin personally this morning, because I could not get to the bus stop to get to, to get to work, to get to UVM, and I fortunately had my husband drive me, was looking at the prioritization of the snow clearing. I think that would be interesting for us to know how those choices are made, because obviously, choices have to be made. We can't, you know, wave a magic wand and have, have these all, all these streets and sidewalks cleared. But I think that would be interesting to know what Justin's rationale or the team's rationale is for snow clearing.
Didn't we get that? Didn't we see an email on, didn't we just have something on the west?
On the snow, snow plow removal plan.
Right. But for the plowing, I don't know that we saw for the sidewalks.
Because the sidewalk, probably.
Oh, just the sidewalks you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah. Because we could get to school, that was great. So the walkers to school got to school, but the commuter, there was no way I was going to walk up Los DeLos to catch the bus.
No.
So that was...
There are still many sidewalks now.
Right, right. Where, you know, and it depends on communities, too. So I would be just curious to know where we are with our equipment, you know, and our personnel, our level of, you know, response that we can provide. I think that would be helpful for the community to hear as well. So I just, is that something that you would be interested in?
There were a lot of complaints about, you know, amount of snow on roadways in the last, I mean, and I know we had a huge snowstorm, right? And it went from Saturday night, Sunday, and not so much, and it was done by Sunday night. But then there was a lot of high wind that blew snow over. So I don't know, you know, I'd like to have sort of an explanation of, of, you know, what that priority is and...
The salt was working because it was cold.
Salt doesn't, I know it, there's, there were a lot of variables that were not in the DPW's favor, you know, for that event. And every event's a little bit different, so.
I'm not, I'm not really concerned about it. I think they do the best they can. I have a student who actually told me today, two all-nighters over the weekend. He drives part-time for one of the towns. I forget which town. He said, he said it was a lot of snow, it was wicked cold, wicked windy, we do the very best we can, and we can't do anymore. I mean, and so I think that's what they did, and, and I'm okay with it.
I'm not talking about the roads.
No, I'm talking roads, roads and sidewalks. I think they're doing the best they can. I mean, certainly can ask out of curiosity how it's prioritized.
Exactly.
But it, to me, it doesn't make any difference. I have faith in the decisions they make, and I think they're doing the best they possibly can when we get significant snow. I mean, you know...
I agree, but I think if, if we could just be cued in on the prioritization, that, that might be helpful. And I, and if we see perhaps, you know, a place where input would be helpful, I think, right?
Sure. I mean, that's, that's fine. I just, I'm, I'm...
But I completely agree with you that they do the best they can, and given the quantity of snow that fell over the weekend...
By the cold and the wind.
All we can do is say a big thank you, because...
Exactly, so...
Right? We were on the road yesterday morning, so, right? Right?
So I'm fine. I love the prioritization, so we can talk to community members about their sidewalks, but I just want to echo what you just said. We owe them a big thank you. They were out all night Saturday, all night Sunday, and they're still working today. So thank you to the DPW. It's a big storm, it's a lot of snow to move around, they're doing a great job.
Do we need a motion to officially...
Thank them?
Thank them, or not?
No, I think we can just say thank you.
Well, I've written resolutions, it's right here.
So the records, the records should show that the City Council officially offers its sincere and hearty thank you to the DPW for the great job they did clearing up from the snowstorm. I mean, it was only, what, we have 14 inches or so? I mean, that's...
Oh, it was more than that.
I think it's more, yeah.
15, 18 inches?
Yeah.
In the grand scheme of things, we should be getting that on a normal, on a normal winter. In the old days, we should be getting that every couple of weeks. So, you know...
We're getting zoned.
To me, yeah, that's exactly, it's me, it's no big deal. You know?
We'll get the root structure.
We'll have Justin come in and brief you on the root structure, how the roots are laid out.
Yeah, and I, and I would be curious, do they only do state roots in our local roads, or do they actually go onto 189 and 89? No, not at all. Okay. I was just curious about that as well.
Can I add one other thing for the other business leader? I have a couple of questions about the financial warrants for Tom later.
Sure.
Yeah.
Under other business?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Can I ask you a question? Where's the planning commission?
Medium Conference Room.
It's not an agenda item, it's too late for the public to ask questions.
All right, it was too late to change the order and add, but we will...
You'll have to sit for four hours, and then you could ask.
We do the best we can here, right? All around. Okay. I think that was the only thing that I heard bubbling up from the community and that I saw this morning, but I think that Tom's emphasis on the big thank you is what needs to come through loud and clear. So Kevin, we have your announcements.
Couple scheduling things. The South Burlington Rotary Event, Awards Event, it's not a dinner, it's hors d'oeuvres and cocktails, 5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday at the Trader Dukes. And I also wanted to let you know that there is a resolution that's going to be considered on the House floor, the Vermont House floor, right now scheduled for January 30 at 1:00 PM in honor of Trevor Whipple. And so Tom and I will be going down to that. If any councilors wanted to go, sit up in the...
Balcony?
Yeah, and see that red and see Trevor there. You can ride with us if you'd like. Megan reached out to me the other day and asked about next step in the cost-benefit analysis part of the IZ process. And I, there are a couple of local economists, including Linda McGinnis, who've had a career in, with the World Bank as an economist for them, and perhaps one other that I just want to sit down and talk to probably late this week or early next to kind of get the scope of the project down, and what we would need to hire out, and what we might be able to do with some volunteer help. And so we need to get that, now the I, two IZ committees are going, we need to, and the PUD part of the planning commission's work is moving forward, we need to get moving on this. So hopefully, I'll get to meet with them this week or early next and have a report for you on your February 4 meeting. The, Megan has also asked if we could get an update on the regional dispatch project, and I'll have a much more detailed one for you, also probably on the 4th or the 19th. But right now, we have the consultant is on board, and it, it's, looks again like we will be taking this in a step-by-step process, meaning likely that Colchester and South Burlington will be the first to merge into the new CCPSA authority, possibly as early as July 1. So that's what we're shooting for. And then, and Winuski will be in the mix, and then probably Burlington after that. So by this time next year, we hope to have everybody in. But doing it in an incremental basis is, is probably an easier thing to do. I was at the TDR committee, and we can talk about them later. I have, John Burton has, and a couple of others have approached us on behalf of a company called Consensus. They are a blockchain-based technology that does real-time surveying for governmental entities. So surveying in real time and continuously on a particular issue. And they want a pilot, they want a community to work with on a pilot program, and we're discussing this with them. So it would be the ability to have ongoing survey on, let's just say, traffic on Dorset Street, and have that data roll out over time.
And any cost?
And watch it move up and down. No, uh-uh. No, just staff time, some limited staff time. But again, it's a, it's a pilot project, much like the one that Donna facilitated, and it would likely occur in the late spring, early summer. This is a company out of Toronto, and we met with them a couple times. Steering Committee, oh, I already told you about this. Steering Committee meets tomorrow night at 6:30 here in this room. I see David back there, made me think of...
How long do you think that meeting will be?
I'm guessing hour and a half, max.
Oh, okay.
Probably, I'm thinking more like an hour and 15 minutes.
Should I postpone the TDR meeting, because it's supposed to be at 7 o'clock, or I could just let them meet?
You could let them meet, probably, and go back and forth, maybe.
I have quorum for that. I might not be able to be here.
When's this? I'm sorry, I missed that.
The Steering Committee meeting, 6:30 to about 9:15...
What day?
Or 8:15 or so.
Maybe.
Tomorrow night?
7:45.
Tomorrow night, I won't make...
5 or 8.
This is the joint meeting with the school board.
Do we know about that earlier?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I will not make tomorrow night. I can't, can't do it.
Helen will be here? Helen is not.
Helen's not.
Helen's gone.
I will be here.
I'm sorry, I've got a, I'll turn a commitment that I can't, I really can't defer tomorrow night.
Do you need quorum for steering committees?
Yeah, I think so. There's no, that has no authority, it's a reporting body, but...
Are you going to be here tomorrow night? Okay. Is that all right? Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so we have item number six, the consent agenda, and that is the approval and signing of the disbursements, the approval of the amendments for December 17th. And I did catch one thing I hadn't caught before on those. An authorization to allow me to execute a quick claim deed for the conveyance of the City Glebe interests at 1400 Spear Street. Resolution establishing the Energy Project Reserve Fund and interim zoning application fee. That's been proposed.
I have one question on one of these, I'm happy to make the motion and then during discussion.
Okay, so Tom has made the motion, and a second?
Second.
All right, Tim has seconded. All right.
The question is on the interim zoning application fees, the 275 that mirrors the Development Review Board. Would this be in replace of the 275, or would they be paying the 275 interim zoning and another 275 for the site plan before the DRB? It's duplicated?
I believe it's both, but I can check with Paul on that.
My only other question on that is, is this comparable to what it has been when we had interim zoning in the past, the last two times, the last 20 years, and when Wilson's had it? Is this a normal fee amount of $275, or is this a, a new amount we're charging?
My understanding is it's the same as what was charged the last time that five, four years ago interim zoning was introduced.
So this comes with some precedent?
Yep.
All right. The only correction I had, December 17 minutes, it was page nine, I believe. Let me just get there. And it was, it's my mistake, we review these ahead of time, so I'm sorry for not catching this before. But it's in that second paragraph, Mr. Chittenden moved to appoint Sophie Mazzarotti. I don't know...
Mazowita?
Mazowita, that's it, Mazowita. We didn't have that corrected, but we might as well. M-A-Z-O-W-I-T-A.
All right.
Okay. Alan Strong, Vince Bolduc, and Duncan Murdock. The one person we didn't include there, and Duncan Murdock. M-U-R-D-O-C-H.
Vince is spelled incorrectly.
Oh, yeah, there's an N in Vince.
Names are important.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So friendly amendment, I hope, since that's what we moved to approve. All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that was unanimous. All right. We're now on to item number seven. We are honored to have the Superintendent of Schools join us tonight, David Young.
I'll see you guys tomorrow, some of you.
Yes.
So thanks for having me here on your agenda. I know it's a busy schedule. I wanted to just address you folks and make sure you were aware that we are going to be putting up the Black Lives Matter flag on February 1st. And so I wanted to just make sure that people are aware of some of the important activities. Obviously, every day, there's important activities that are happening at our schools, but this is going to happen on February 1st. So just to give you a little bit of context, anytime there's events happening like this, I think it's important, all of our important officials and folks around the community know what we're going to be doing. So if you can imagine, we've got 2,500 students, we've got a lot of staff, but not every staff member necessarily knows what happens at every school. So this year, I've, this, in preparation for this, I've also talked to all of our staff at all five schools. In addition, talked to the Rotary Chief Burke, and also wanted to talk with you folks about what we're doing. Susie Mayer, here we do as well, and I think you have handouts, maybe we'll just, she'll give those to you. For your future reading, and I'm just going to hit on a couple high points, but as I said earlier, on February 1st, we'll be, the students, with the full support of the South Burlington School District, including unanimous support from the school board, will be raising the Black Lives Matter flag as a symbol of inclusion, especially for students of color. The flag will fly for the month of February this year and the years to come. Also important to note that February is also Black History Month, and this student-led initiative ties to a larger educational work of the school district, including but not limited to. Those of you who've obviously been around our schools, we have some pretty important things that we call our "N's." So what do we want our students to be able to achieve at the end of their journey with us in preparation for their future? Obviously, one is being academically proficient, possessing the qualities or dispositions as lifelong learners, possessing the skills to be, to grow personally, and finally, being good citizens. And we think that this effort strongly supports that work. In addition, the students have also worked to connect with other constituencies around the community, and we believe that, again, the students rising, raising the Black Lives Matter flag will inspire a greater understanding of racial inequity and steps we may each take to address inequity. We have a lot of information on our website. I think one of the most important pieces, if you are asked in the community, which many of us are asked in many different places, we would ask that you direct them. Again, if you're happy to respond, if someone says, "Why are they doing that?", you can direct them to the website on our site to gain more information. We have a series of FAQs, or frequently asked questions, which we think are really important. And then also, and part of that, I think is important, it's the statement of intent from the students, staff and community, community members on the Black Lives Matter flag-raising committee. And they provided this, this statement that I think is important, that, that resonates, and I'll just quickly read it to you. "The South Burlington students, with the full support of the South Burlington School District, are raising the Black Lives Matter flag. The flag signifies our commitment to creating a just and equitable and empathetic world. It's a symbol of inclusion, especially for our students of color. Injustice and racism are an ongoing struggle in our nation and our South Burlington community. This continues to traumatize and exclude traditionally marginalized groups. The Black Lives Matter flag movement affirms the value of Black lives in response to the racism that infiltrates every institution in the United States. Our purpose is to engage our school community in hopes that it will leave with a greater understanding of racial inequity, more specifically, its impact throughout Vermont and our country as a whole. The flag will be a reminder that history, including Black history, is not just something of the past. History is constantly being made, and this flag and this movement are part of it. The raising of the Black Lives Matter flag is our kickoff to Black History Month. We intend for it to generate courageous, community-wide conversations about racial inequity and recognize a month of celebration of the achievements of Black Americans and their contributions to our country." So as I said, more information's to be, to be, you know, to be available for anybody who wants it. Again, several folks, obviously, the high school, myself, Susie, this committee, we're happy to answer any questions about that. But the last thing we wanted to do is, something happens, something, an event happens like this, we like to make sure that people are informed. And when we are asked, we can direct accordingly to make sure that people can get the information. So, that said, if you have any particular questions, I'll see some of you tomorrow night. We'll talk a little bit about our budget and some of the other things that are going on. So happy to answer any questions, or happy to move on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm glad you've taken a decisive action like this, I appreciate it. And I appreciate the school board's unanimity in supporting it. I know you had some spirited discussions, probably over in the Tuttle Library. I read about some of them in the other paper, and I, I think you, you made the right decision.
We think that's important, too, because that's, that's part of all of us growing, sometimes different perspectives lean, provide additional value to, to the work that we're doing. So again, it's important, as you know, you have a lot of different perspectives yourselves.
The summary that you wrote is very helpful. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, this is great.
That's really good.
This is great, yeah, yeah. And you're not the first school in the state to do it, right? Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of the night.
So item number eight, consider and possibly authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract related to conducting a feasibility study of consolidated residential trash hauling.
Good evening. Justin Rabbit, the Director of Public Works. Normally, as you're aware, the award of contracts, particularly ones of this relative dollar amount, show up on Consent Agenda, and we move on. But this is a topic of discussion that has a little bit of history in the county, and we hope engenders more discussion going forward. So we wanted to have it on the deliberative agenda, more just to have the discussion about what are we doing, and as importantly, what are we not doing? What does this not lock us into? What are the timeframes? What are the questions we're looking to answer? So, and Councilor Chittenden was involved early on in this, and was a proponent of us working with the Solid Waste District and the City of Burlington. I'll just do a real bit of quick history. The Solid Waste District has visited this topic a couple times over the past decade, eventually largely due to hauler opposition. They never took the next steps. Obviously, they never implemented a consolidated trash hauling. However, they did decide in 2014 that because they had the, the experience and the expertise, they would serve as a resource to communities that might want to explore this on their own. I know that we've had this topic unrelated to this specific solution, it comes up every now and then with the council and with the citizens. So what we are proposing tonight is a joint effort between the cities of South Burlington and Burlington. Their Board of Finance and City Council are considering this action at this, their coming Monday's meeting, as well as with the Solid Waste District. Each, each agency would be, have a fiscal share in this, but we would all have an equal voice. As we know, in South Burlington, there are, well, we don't know the exact numbers in South Burlington. Burlington, they have a better handle on it, because they run the recycling program. So all of those haulers register with them, so they know what haulers are in their town. I think, anecdotally, we're all aware of the four or five haulers we see, and we know that multiple haulers will go down the same residential streets into the same neighborhoods multiple times a week. We're not trying to come up with a solution that eliminates choice or is forcing any one particular price model or à la carte model on the residents, but we are asking one particular price model or à la carte model on the residents, but we are asking questions like, is what we're doing today the most efficient for residents? Does it bring about the best costs? Is it the most environmentally sensitive? Is there a way to reallocate the pie so everyone still gets roughly their equivalent slice that they have, market share that they have today? So I provided with you just a few sample kind of FAQs in my memo as a way of indicating that we are not entering this with any preconceived notions. We simply want to kind of have these questions asked, have the community be involved in answering them. There is a statistically valid survey that's part of the scope for proposal that will survey both South Burlington and Burlington, as well as non-South Burlington and Burlington County residents, just to see what the flavor is, and we have past surveys to compare this data against. And I think at Public Works and with the administration, we think this is something definitely, especially at the cost of $20,000, which is in our FY '19 budget, worth investigating a little further. The consultant that we have proposed working with has done this numerous, dozens of times across the country, certainly with larger markets. They also have a history both in Vermont and with the Solid Waste District, and we thought it was just kind of the right mix of experience and personalities. Interestingly enough, there are communities in Vermont that are doing this. So if you're wondering, are there state statutes we need to be worried about? Everything legislatively is at the, would remain at the local level. So Vermont communities do do this. I know that some neighborhoods in South Burlington, be they condominiumized primarily or not, also do this. And by this, just to be really clear, is we're looking to geographically award hauling contracts. So your neighbor, Butler Farms Trash is all going to be collected on a Monday, and that's it. No more intrusion of haulers and recycling trucks and the unnecessary wear and tear on our roads and the pollution on Tuesday to Friday. And we would, that would be broken up not just in South Burlington, but also in Burlington. Right now, we don't know if we want our geographic areas to be specific just to Burlington, or could there be some overlap? Again, other than knowing that we want to study this, we don't have, we haven't given the consultant any, the only thing we have said is, they must be willing to provide beyond just traditional cart service, à la carte services. For example, today, if you want to get rid of a mattress, or if you need backdoor collection, this is, that's probably more attuned to Burlington. If you need something beyond just a truck pulling up at your curb and picking, you know, they will be, they will price and provide those services. So we don't want to exclude anyone from any services we're getting today. That's a little bit of the background. I hope it kind of paints a clear picture, I know, in talking with Councilor Chittin, perhaps he has a couple of thoughts to share, or?
I just really appreciate your leadership on this. I think you understand the complexities of this. You used to serve on the CSWD boards, you know the issue. So I think Justin's provided a great deal of leadership and is just bringing this forward for consideration to explore and understand better in the right way.
Well, we'll know a lot more if, how much does this feasibility still cost?
Twenty thousand. We're committed to $20,000.
Is that our share in Burlington?
It's our share. Burlington as well as the Solid Waste District, and obviously Burlington, the share is population-based, so Burlington's is obviously larger than ours.
Do you have any questions, David or Tim?
No, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. There, you know, there's no doubt that there's waste in the way trash is collected in Chittin County.
So the one, just to provide some input, when I brought this up back in 2008, 2009, I was probably in that wave when it was not, when it wasn't going to happen, right? But one of the arguments for why there might be some residential resistance was that any consolidated trash hauling would preclude, would prevent the residential drop-offs that can happen now. And I was told that Vermonters like to take care of their own trash. So is this something that would be able to continue, or at least have?
We have asked for them to consider an opt-out portion of this. So I believe, our, South Burlington's drop-off center off Patchan Road is the healthiest and busiest that the district operates. They have no desire, and Burlington also has a pretty active, they're trying to relocate theirs presently, but they have no desire for these to replicate or eliminate the ability of our residents to continue to doing what they've been doing historically. So you could opt out of this if we were to write it that way, and I don't see why we would not.
And when you talk about opt-out, does that include also the taxes that we'd probably be paying?
So interesting is, how does this, you know, one, and I don't know if I put it in my FAQ or not, is, but how, who administers the billing of this program? Does the Solid Waste District? Do us, as utility builders, do it? There's, we can certainly bill for the collection of municipal waste, just like we can bill for stormwater. It's relatively easy to do, it's just a software situation. Does the hauler do it? So we're going to explore all those alternatives. Also, they have budgeted in time a number of public meetings, so whether we want that to be kind of a standalone on just the topic, or a chat with the council, or at the planning committee, kind of whatever we, however we choose for the public participation process to go in South Burlington, their proposal is considered.
The other questions I had, with regard to, you know, what opportunities or options exist today, some haulers do provide real options, as opposed to, once a week pickup, you have once every two weeks pickup, or you have smaller, you know, bins and larger recycling bins. There are several options which I would hope would be considered, too. But also, would this, would this go through the same RFP process that we do for anything with regard to city maintenance?
Yes, in terms of how to construct a contract for the actual services?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, the term of that contract would probably have to be of some significant length, longer than kind of our standard contract, to ensure people, if they have to, if companies have to make investments, for whatever reason, we don't think they need to, but to ensure them a stable user fee base for years. And then it would be competitively bid, and we could choose to just go with a little bit or across the spectrum, or we could choose to say that Emery's Hauling has 400 customers today, we want Emery's Hauling to remain a viable small business. They are to somehow, you know, we can write it in a way that Emery's Hauler gets a geographic area that is comprised of 400 customers. So past attempts have, at this, back when there was more options, frankly, when there were a lot more smaller haulers, the large haulers rallied to smaller haulers to tell them how much they should be worried about this driving them out of the business, and then in subsequent years, they just bought them out anyways. But now, there's, there really is no more small hauler compared to what we would consider the small hauler of 10 or 20 years ago, at least not in Burlington, South Burlington. You're more likely to see them in other areas of Chittin County. So that was one of the main oppositions in the past, was there used to be nine, 10, 11 viable trash haulers in the county, and honestly, today, in South Burlington, Burlington, there are four.
Those are my questions.
Just a comment that, I mean, the whole process of collecting waste from residential areas is going to change when they have to start picking up organics, right? And if I were a hauler, I would want to weigh somebody's garbage can before, so I could charge them by weight, so that people have some incentive to reduce what they buy in order to, they reduce what they throw away. I mean, you know, because households, depending upon their behavior, can generate larger quantities of trash or not.
In the late aughts, there was a reverse approach of that. If you recall, I don't remember the program's name, but there, you were to be incentivized for how much you recycled.
Right.
And we were, we as?
They got money back for it.
We were given, you could get gift cards out like Hannaford's. So we were given the roll-off containers that had a chip on it. However, due to Burlington's lack of participation in the program, because they did their own recycling, it never got off the ground, but they deployed tens of thousands of these large bins, counting wide. However, if you've been reading recently, the last week or two, the notion of organics collectibles at small, meaning less than four residential units, there's going to be discussion this legislative session about eliminating that mandate, that 2020 mandate. So that's another reason why the, you know, everyone's always worried about the organics, and in response to that, they just keep kicking the can two years down the road. So now, the kick the can proposal is perhaps eliminate the mandatory side of it for small residential properties.
But I agree with the incentives. I think it's important to incentivize people to consume responsibly. I really think so. All right. Well, thank you. I think we need to approve or authorize Kevin Dorn if that is what we choose to do.
So who?
Second.
Any other comments? I don't see any, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When will the study start?
Assuming all goes well with Burlington, and then we shuffle paperwork back and forth, hopefully in three to four weeks.
And it'll take how long? I don't think it said in here.
Approximately five to six months. So, you know, by midsummer.
It's not an emergency, right?
No.
Be good to know.
A survey would be done?
Yes, they would do, they would do a statistically valid survey. Surveys.
Like by mail?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Yeah.
Be very interesting. Sure deal. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah, the economy of scale will be interesting, too.
I mean, they just don't throw away the results, you know?
All right. Item number nine, consider and possibly authorize the city manager to proceed with formal acquisition of land interest for the Community Center and Market Street Access Parcel at 180 Market Street. And Andrew Bolduc, our city attorney, is here to walk us along with this purchase and sale agreement.
Andrew Bolduc, City Attorney. Provided in your packet, a purchase and sale agreement that was signed about 18 months ago, or about a little over a year ago, relating to the Community Center parcel that's going to be known as 180 Market Street. And as you can, if you look through the purchase and sale, there's an option to exercise this during the due diligence period, and what we're asking tonight is to authorize Kevin to move forward with that, with that exercising the option, as well as, there's a portion of property that we're going to need for the roadway, that we're also going to need from the adjacent property. So this would also be to authorize Kevin to execute legal agreements necessary to accomplish this land acquisition.
All right. Are we ready to move ahead, or are there specific questions?
I'll move that we approve the acquisition of the land interest for Community Center and Market Street Access Parcel, 180 Market Street.
So I originally abstained from the library vote, but the voters of this community resoundingly supported this notion, so I'm happy to second this motion.
Yahoo!
Very good. All right. Any comments or questions?
No, we better approve this, or we can't build the community centers. Off we go.
That's a good point. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that, was there a nay? There was a nay? All right, one nay.
Did you vote against this?
Tim?
I thought so, so I, but you all voted for it, and it was a pretty resounding vote, and I didn't want to derail it, so.
To the rescue.
Go library.
Helen, we're going to have to call the pilot and turn her plane around. Okay.
Thanks, Andrew.
Very good. Thank you, Andrew. All right. Number 10, the final public hearing on the Vermont Community Development Program's $525,000 grant to support the construction of the Allen Square Building by Cathedral Square. And we hear Cindy Reed is here.
Cindy Reed is here.
Yeah.
So this is just the public hearing that's necessary.
So we need a motion. Right. I think we're going to just go ahead and move to enter a public hearing, and you can tell us about all the successes thus far, or anything that we need to know.
So moved. Second.
All right. All those in favor of entering in the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. That was you now. All right. Cindy Reed.
Great, thank you. I'm Cindy Reed, I'm the Director of Development at Cathedral Square, and we really appreciate the city's leadership on applying for the VCDP grant, and we were fully occupied before we opened the doors. And I think that you've all gotten a chance to tour the property. If you haven't, give me a call, I'd be happy to show you. We're getting programs up and running, Tai Chi, chair yoga, all kinds of wellness programs. The school kids have been over to connect, so it's just really fabulous new community, and we're really excited to be open and really appreciate the VCDP support. So unless there's any questions or comments.
Any kinks in the building?
Well, there's always kinks in new buildings. We're working out some HVAC issues, primarily there with our office space, which is actually better than having the residents deal with it. So we're working on that with our mechanical engineer and balancer and all that good stuff, working through some more punch. We did have an issue with the planning and zoning certificate of occupancy, and we're going through the process. So basically, in the T5 district, I'll just do a really short overview since you asked, in the T5 district, there's a piece in the code that talks about the number of doors that need to be on Market Street, which we've designed to that, to that criteria. And then there's something that talks about public entrance. And so the CO is denied because we don't keep our doors unlocked, because it's a secure facility. So it's a situation where public safety is bumping against the code requirement around design, so we feel that we should be able to have a secure facility, because that's what we do in all of our properties. So we're working through the process, we have an appeal into DRB, so that's one hiccup that I have confidence we'll work through, but since you asked, I'll let you know that.
Same issue came up with the proposed hotel.
I read that. Yeah.
And so when I was at that meeting, they talked about the ability of the person at the desk buzzing people in through the street door at night hours, or the person using their personal card to get in. I don't remember the exact resolution. I don't know if that application went to another meeting or not, but that kind of discussion occurs. It was a very similar situation.
Right, so that might be helpful when the DRB goes to hear this case and look at what kind of precedence there is. So that's one hiccup. But other than that, we're working through design issues with the site plan for the city's building. We're very excited about the library. It's going to be a great neighbor for our residents, and so that's, those are our highlights. I think the building looks great. We've got a lot of compliments on the Beehive that Conan designed and installed.
Well, it is really the focal point when you enter Market Street, so, yeah.
So we did receive eight applications for every apartment, and at that building, we're serving from extremely low-income seniors below 30% of median up to 120% of area median income, so it's truly a mixed-income property, and we saw a high demand for each kind of apartment we had. So it's truly mixed income from formerly homeless to, you know, well-resourced. So it feels like a really great way to deliver healthy housing community, and we see a tremendous need, and so we look forward to developing more housing in South Burlington.
Very good, very good.
Who do you start your next one?
Well, we're starting the next one in Burlington, at the former Cambrian Rise Development, I mean, at the current Cambrian Rise Development, so.
Isn't there more acreage in Market Street, Market Street?
There is, we sort of have to spread, have to spread the investment around. Let us know as there's opportunities. We're also working, we're working to help the receiver of the Pillsbury Group.
Thank you.
So, and thank you for your support in that, Kevin. So that's a complicated situation, and we're doing our best to help the current receiver to keep those communities stable and operating and getting them strengthened.
There's been new media reports about that. Are things stable there now?
There's going to be a court decision issued this week, hopefully this week, about temporary versus permanent receivership, and sort of what the status is there. So a lot to be worked out. It's just up to the court, and we've just said as an organization that we're willing to be helpful where we can. So currently, we're working as a contractor to Primmer Piper, who's the receiver. And stay tuned, we're not sure what will happen, but it's 250 residents in four communities, so it's a really significant situation.
Oh, it's the four communities. It wasn't just the two that?
Three in South Burlington, and then one in St. Albans. And there's a combination of independent living and licensed residential care, so a lot of vulnerable folks. So hopefully, we're hoping for the best for those communities. So thank you for your support in many ways for the Allen Square property, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Housing Trust Fund, the Form Based Code, applying to VCDP grant, all of those, all of those ways, the city really has such an important impact on creating affordable communities, because we just need more affordable housing. I mean, this government shutdown really highlights how many people in this country are one paycheck away from being, losing their housing. It's quite staggering. So, thank you.
This is an opportunity for any members of the public who wanted to say anything or ask any questions. I don't see any hands, so anything else?
We just thanked us. I want to thank you for all the good work you do to bring affordable housing to the area, so thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a South Burlington-based organization.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was, that was one of the ones. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
All right. Item 11, presentation of fiscal year 8. Item eleven, presentation of fiscal year 18 pension valuation. And we have Eric Shait, who's here. Yes, hi, welcome. I think that's the first time you've come before us in this chamber, anyway, right?
Yes, my first time.
Yeah.
Point of clarity, on the last item, did we have to vote on anything, or was just a public hearing?
Public hearings required by the program.
My name's Eric Shait. I'm a actuary from Newport Group. For those of you that haven't heard of Newport Group before, they are a large national retirement services company, who in April of 2018 bought the Retirement Services Division of People's United Bank in downtown Burlington, and they opened up their own Burlington office on Main Street. So our little group there basically moved down to Main Street. We're still working out of there, serving this area, but now we have more resources across the country, we have more qualified actuaries to help us with things, and we have better programs to do valuations, and just better resources to help do the pension plan valuation. So I am going to primarily talk about the liabilities of the plan, and the funding contribution. Before we get into that, I want to just take a step back and go over how, how the funding happens for a plan, what's, what's the actuarial funding method, and what they mean, and what they are. So there's many different ways of funding a pension plan. Two of the primary ones are what's called unit credit, and then entry-age normal. So unit credit is basically saying, we're gonna look at the benefits earned in the plan based on current compensation, current service, nothing projected to the future. This is what's been earned in the past as a liability. And that's what single employer pension plans have to do for their funding, and that's what the city did for their funding up until January, July 1, 2014. And then after that, we switch to entry-age normal, which will take your current service, but it's gonna project compensation out to the future in anticipation that employees are still working. Their compensation's gonna go up in the future, the benefits you owe them for what they've earned today, 10 years from now is gonna be higher just because they have higher compensation. So it takes that into account, and it also primarily came about because the Gatsby Financial said you have to use this method to display your liability on the financial statements.
The Gasby, did you?
Gatsby, yeah.
Gatsby.
Gatsby.
What does it stand for?
General Accounting Standards Board. So, beginning in 24, fiscal year end 2015, I believe, your financial statements had to reflect the entry-age normal form of liability. This is just a little bit more in-depth, but when we're talking about the entry-age normal, what it's really doing is it's, it's taking your cost and attributing it to each employee across an even percentage of compensation while they're employed. So their cost per year is gonna go up, it's, it's supposed to be an even percentage of what that employee is making in compensation that year. So if it's 10%, you're gonna, your contribution for that employee is 10% each year of whatever their compensation is that year. And the goal is that it's, it's more even, so it, as a percentage of pay, if you're doing your budget, your percentage of pay won't change as much from year to year, because that's the way it's designed. And it also attributes more liability to the past than unit credit would. So we'll see, in a second, we'll see a little chart of the difference between the two. But a point I want to make is, at the end of the day, when an employee retires, their liability is the same. It's just how you get there, and what you're putting away now for what you're gonna pay in the future. And there's this little chart. So the top line is the entry-age normal liability for a participant, and the bottom is the unit credit. And the entry age smooths it out a little bit more, whereas the unit credit may not have as much liability now, but in the future, your annual contribution would start jumping up more and more each year. And so the reason we fund on the entry-age normal is because we want to anticipate that now and get there, but we're also gonna look at what you would be funded on both ways to give you an idea, because the unit credit right now would be a good representation of, if you just froze benefits and no one earned another benefit in the plan, that would be your liability to that. You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have that additional liability accrued. But we look at both, because we want to fund towards what you're gonna eventually have to fund. So just if you hear me talking about liability, it's, it's the present value of benefits earned in the past. And then if I'm talking about the normal cost, it's what we expect to be earned during the current year. So when we do funding, we, we look at what's been earned in the past, we compare it to assets, and then we also look at what's going to be earned in the coming year, and we put that all together to get our recommended contribution. So I've kind of covered this. Some of the reasons that we, we made the switch to entry-age normal was because it's less volatile, because Gatsby had to do it, and we didn't want to be having two different liabilities, so we didn't want to be showing your financial statements with one liability and your funding on another. And because it is, it does help you fund now for your future liabilities, and that's a more conservative and prudent way to go about it. Kind of talked about this, so let's jump into the contribution. So just in general, your funding policy, what you've generally contributed to the plan as a contribution each year, is we take your past liabilities, we compare it to your assets, and if you're, have unfunded liabilities, we make an amortization payment on that based on a 20-year amortization period. And then in addition to that, the contribution would include benefits expected to be earned during the coming year. So we're paying what's being earned now, and we're making a payment towards anything that's earned in the past. And then there's a little bit of interest, because this is done as of July 1, 2018, and the payment goes in on a later date, so we take that into account. Employees also fund a portion of this. We'll see a little graphic in a second. This is just the city's contribution. So when we calculate the, the recommended contribution, we do use what's called the actuarial value of assets, it's a smooth value. We'll see that in a couple slides. This year, it's very close to the market value of assets, so these two contributions would be almost the same thing. But at the top here, we have current recommended contribution, bottom is last year's. We show the 10 and the 20 years, just so you could see what the difference would be if you paid down the amortization payment over 20 or 10 years. So right now, the recommended contribution is $1,384,000 compared to la, on the 20-year amortization, compared to last year of $1,246,000. And this is just kind of a breakdown of what the contribution is. So the city portion, which is the 1.3 million that we just saw, 630,000 of that is for benefits being earned in the year, almost 100,000 is for interest to the later payment date, and then 520,000 is the amortization payment towards past liabilities. And then the employees are funding, doing 30,000.
Can you go to the previous slide real quick? So the 660,000, is that part of that next bar there?
No, that is separate. It's just mentioned because there is a loan payment for that, but it's not part of the recommended contribution to the plan.
Okay. So it's not part of this?
No.
It's on top of this.
Right, thank you.
When does that loan retire, Tom?
It's a 20-year loan, I think it was taken out in 2011, so, good ways to go.
So this is the, the funded status on those two methods. So the present value of accrued benefit is, is a unit credit form of liability, so it's what's been earned to date, if nothing else was earned, and you walked away, you'd be about 102% funded. And then the entry-age normal liability is significantly higher, because we're funding towards the future, and that's about 84% funded. So we'll see in a little bit, these, these are very good. You want to, you want to be at 100% on the unit credit method. You would like to be working towards 100% on entry-age normal, but it's not necessary. You will get there eventually, and that's what, because you're funding towards that, that, that is intended to go up over time if all the other assumptions are met.
The top part, present value of accrued benefits, the PAV, is the unit cost method. You're not using that term here, but what you presented earlier, okay.
Yeah, it's the same thing, we, it kind of got interchanged. So this is on the smooth values of, smooth value of assets. We also compare the market value, because we want to keep, we want to see both. It's roughly the same this year, you have 101.8% on the present value of accrued benefits, and about eight, still 84% on the entry-age normal.
You have a question?
Big, long graph you had earlier with those two lines, and how we're currently farthest away from each other, the unit cost versus the entry-age normal. What was the span of that graph in your mind? 30 years, 20 years? When are we gonna get to that closer, where the two lines are closer?
The whole span is approximately 23 years, so you're right in the middle, and it's really the, the remaining active working span of active employees right now. So it's the employees that are in this plan, how much longer they have until they retire. And then they're retiring at the top of that chart.
But it's constantly being pushed out, because...
If there's new employees being added, it'll be being pushed out, but at least half the plan is soft-frozen, where there's no new employees coming in, so you will slowly move, move along it a little bit more. So just year over, year from last year, the actual return on assets was a little bit greater than the assumed return, so that's a small net gain. We'll talk more about mortality in a little bit, but the, the update in the mortality projection scale from last year to this year was a small gain, but there was larger-than-normal compensation increases, which jumped up liabilities a bit, and it's not so much compensation as much as it was overtime compared to the prior year jumped up. So prior year, overtime was kind of low, and then this year jumped up a lot, and that, that led to a large increase in compensation, which increases the liability.
So our actual performance is above what we assumed, but we're still contributing a hundred thousand dollars or so more than previous, and that's because of the mostly firefighters overtime? Or is that across the board?
Pretty across the board for the overtime.
Okay.
So, yeah, so there's an assumed rate of return, but there's also an assumed compensation increase from year to year. So it's the same thing, whereas if that's more than the assumed, you get a, a loss.
And with our two firefighters, we, which should reduce our overtime fees in a way that should smooth that out a little bit, right? Because in the end, it's less total salary paid up.
Are the two firefighters going to Beamer's or here?
They're going to Beamer's.
Not even that.
This is a historical graph of the two measures of funding, and the entry-age normal only, only goes back to 7/114, because that's when it first started being calculated. But they do move pretty close together, the same movement, and you, the PBAB method has been consistently at or above 100% for the last eight years. And this is just some comparison to other entities. Part of the reason for Gatsby was everyone had their own funding method, so if you tried to compare one city to another, one state to another, you're looking at two numbers, and they mean two completely different things. So that's why all these are on entry-age normal. The city of South Burlington, 84%. The average plan as of July, June 30, 2017, was approximately 71%. June 30, 18, I would expect to be a little higher than that, but it wasn't available when I put this together. Beamer's is at 83%. And the reason that these discount rates are there is because different discount rates get different liabilities, just because the discount rate is different. So Beamer's is using 7.5, you're using 7.25. So if you were also using 7.5, your funded ratio would be higher, it'd be about 86, 80 to 88%. So it's on there to kind of display that their discount rates are higher, and their funded percentages are lower. So you're, you're better in both regards.
I feel like I'm talking too much, this is my last comment. This slide right here tells me that we, I almost interpret that we might be overfunding our pension, to the point, since we're leading the pack here, not that we could ever do that, because the pension's important, but what I'm saying is, when budgets are tight, we do have the option to put less than the 1.3 million in this year, and we would lower that 84% down to some other smaller percentage, possibly bringing us more in line with our neighboring municipalities. Is that correct, that we have that option?
Right. Minimum contribution is still the amount we want to meet, though, so that that funding ratio can actually get to close to 100% over the 20 years. Otherwise, we could run a really bad year, we could go into a deficit.
Okay.
And the plan could be compromised.
Obligates you to make that contribution, it's just what you've been doing. I'll stop asking questions.
The, the retirement fund, that's, that's the problem child in my clear right now, and has been for a couple of years. Yeah, listers. So that's the least well-funded.
When we move down to 7.25, Tom, I recall you saying that somehow we would gain something that we could reinvest.
It was just to help the long-term value of the plan, to make a more realistic rate of return. So bringing it down to 7.25, as Eric's showing you right here, puts us in a better funding ratio. Because if we have consistent years where we're not meeting the seven and a half, and I, I'm sure Patrick and, and Mike will talk more about this now, that, that could compromise the plan more. So, I mean, we may, at some point, not this year, maybe not next year, but we may even look at bringing that down to seven. So it was, it was the right move. It doesn't help us reinvest money, it actually costs us more in the short term, in terms of the liability increasing, but it's gonna be worth, worth it in the long run.
I might bring that up on their other business mission.
What's Oklahoma and Chicago, what are they like right now, do you know?
I don't know, but I can only imagine.
You can only imagine.
So when we calculate these liabilities, there's a lot of assumptions that go into it. These are just some brief overview of the major ones. The discount rate, what we were just talking about, the 7.25%, it's the long-term rate of return, but it's also how we discount future liabilities to the present, and it has a high sensitivity, the liabilities in the plan, so that's probably the big, if that changes, that has the biggest impact on your liabilities.
What is the discount rate? Which, which number is that?
It's 7.25.
That's, that's what you call the discount rate?
It's also the long-term rate of return, so when we think about it, the liability today, you would expect to have assets equal to that, because both of them are gonna grow. You're expecting them both grow at the same rate in the future. Salary growth has a medium impact on liabilities, and then just, we have an assumption about when people retire, and if they leave employment before they hit retirement age, and if they pass away, and those have less of an impact, but they still have a medium impact. So we're not gonna go too in-depth, but the mortality assumption uses standardized mortality table, but every year, there's an updated projection scale to those mortality tables, and that projection scale is saying, in the future, we expect mortality to improve. So someone who's 70 today, compared to someone who's 70, 20 years from now, is not gonna have the same rate of mortality. So that's kind of what that's doing, and every year, it's updated from social security data, and that gets updated into the plan every year. Since the last three years, it's been slight gain, so it was originally too much improvement, and now that's come down a bit, so it's a benefit to the plan.
Does that take into account gender?
Yes.
And smoking?
It is, does not take into account smoking, it's pretty much just gender.
You're saying we're expecting people to live le, I'm sorry, I said I wouldn't talk anymore, but we're expecting shorter lifespans, slightly.
Three to, about four years ago, there was a, a big update where lifespans jumped way up in these tables, but that jumped up a little too much. So lifespan expectation hasn't really come down, but it was over-predicted, and then it's come down. There's a standardized turnover table, I don't have the rates here, but turnover is if someone leaves for reasons other than retirement, disability, or death. Long-term rate of return, discount, also the discount rate hasn't changed. None of these have changed from last year. We assume public safety, employees retire at the age of 53, which a couple of years ago, that was changed based on a study we did about when the average retirement age was. They can retire at 50 with a full benefit, a lot of them stay longer, and even right now, there's a handful over age 50 that are still working. Public, non-public safety, we assume at age 65, which is their normal retirement date. We assume public safety employees have annual increases in compensation of 5%, and non-public safety of 4%, and that is everything. So that's merit, cost of living, promotions, extra variations in overtime. The ups and downs of overtime make it a little volatile, but overall, the averages have been very close to those two rates. There was a slight, minor change to, this is how the social security offset was valued in the plan, which had almost no change on the liabilities. which had almost no change on the liabilities. We're not really going to review these things in depth to determine if they're valid. We're just kind of reviewing them today. Mortality was last, the last major change in mortality was made in July one twenty sixteen. That's when we adopted those updated tables, but they keep getting updated from that point every year. Retirement age was changed in twenty fourteen. And this is just because the discount rate's such a big factor, this is the sensitivity to it. So your entry age normal liability, right now at seven point two five percent is about forty point five million. A swing in that just to eight point two five percent would lower your liabilities by, what is that, four point four million? And then the other way, we have the opposite effect. So when we do the funding, we use a smoothed asset method because it helps to smooth out the changes issue. There's changes in the market. And long-term, it gets you to the same point. It's just each year, you don't want your contribution jumping up or jumping down. So what we do is we take the assumed return and we smooth it with the actual return. And that's how we get, I'm not going to go into each step, but this is a graph. This was first adopted three years ago. And from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, the smooth value is on top. You can see it kind of smoothing it out, but they've come back together. And ultimately, at the end of the day, they're going to, the market's going to jump up and down around the smooth value and your contributions are going to largely be the same. It's just they're more fluid over time. And assumed rate, seven point two five. Last year, this is just a rough calculation of it based on what went in and what went out. The seven point six, the year before is twelve point two. Three-year averages are all pretty close to seven point two five. But when you do, if you do look at the long-term rate of return, you're really, you're looking at the future more than the past. So these are items for reference. But if you're to ever lower it or decide to keep it the same, you'd want to look at capital market assumptions and what's projected to happen in the future, more so than what's happened in the past. And this is just listing compared to the assumed rate. And just brief overview of the plan participants. So top blue is actively employed employees earning benefits in the plan. And last nine years, it's decreased from a hundred and twenty-nine to a hundred and four participants. The middle section is people who have earned a benefit in the plan. They no longer work here, but they haven't drawn their benefits yet. It's just sitting there. They most likely can't take it yet. They're too young. They haven't reached the age to draw benefits. So they're just sitting out there right now. And that's grown from twenty-two to forty-four over time. And the bottom section is retirees, people who are getting monthly payment right now from the plan. And that's increased from forty-eight to seventy-five.
Surviving spouses or?
And surviving spouses. So if it's a retiree who also has a surviving spouse, it's not actually receiving it. It's just one as a retiree. But if that retiree has passed away and the surviving spouse is getting a payment, it's in there as one.
It is as one. Okay. Even the, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Finish your thought.
No, that's it.
Oh, okay. The decrease in the employees there that are active, is that because they're moving over to VEMR's employees? Or is there another explanation?
The non-public safety are, that is part of it. Yep.
Briefly, the average service of a non-public safety employee is about fifteen years. Public safety is about eleven. Expected future service, which I think we kind of touched on a little earlier, is about nine years for non-public safety and eleven years for public safety. And that's really the average age, the average time from now until they're expected to hit their retirement age. And the average age is non-public safety about fifty-five, public safety about thirty-nine. And then the retirees, seventy-five for non-public and sixty-three for public safety.
So we're lucky to have about twenty years ahead of us, you're saying. We're looking at the average age. Where, how does that compare to, you know, kind of, how do you take that into account when you look at the projected costs? I guess, are we in?
I mean, when we're looking at the liabilities, let's take those into account.
Right, right.
So it's like, so you do have roughly ten years until employees are expected to, current employees are expected to reach their retirement age. Doesn't count for new employees. And then once that happens, you have seventy more years of benefit payments to make to those employees. So you have a lot of time, actually. You do have, just on a projection of benefit payments, like each year, sixty-ish years until those payments drop below a million dollars or expected to drop below. So you have a long timeframe left of benefits to pay out of the plan, but not necessarily earn in the plan, depending on if new employees go into the plan.
If the last employee is in line to get this annuity and there are no new ones coming, then, I mean, a hundred percent is a good goal to have because ideally, when the last employee passes away, the last dollar is issued to them just prior. Is that the concept?
Yes, you want, you're funding now for those future payments.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so if you technically have that now in that you're over a hundred percent funded on the present value of accrued benefits, but you want to make sure you're there ten years from now when those employees earn additional benefits. So it's just, we're on our way there. You're in a good spot.
We're in a better spot than our neighboring municipalities, is what I interpret it.
Probably in the best.
I just put to this council again, if there's a lean year next year, one place we can look for a hundred K or two hundred K. It's not that I want to do that. I'm just saying that that's an option, right? We don't need to fund the pension as much as we're currently giving this year.
As long as we meet our minimum contribution, because there is, you do have a resolution that governs that.
Right.
What would be the minimum this year?
One point three eight four was the number.
Is there a resolution that requires that payment?
I think that the, yeah, I believe there is. I can check on that. I mean, the council can always change that, of course, but there is currently a resolution.
Because it's our policy, not mandated by charter.
Right.
Not encouraging that, just saying that it's an option for us.
So have we seen the last, there are no new employees that are going to be in this system, right? Is that true now?
That's not true until we have contract, ratified contract agreements. We're working towards that.
Theoretically, in within a year or two, we might not have any more new entrants into this pension plan. So actuarially projecting out, how many years would remain in the plan, do you think?
Until all payments are in?
Yeah, just ballpark.
Seventy to eighty years?
Seventy to eighty years. Okay. Well, is anybody, no, we won't be here.
No.
But there won't be any other new, non-public safety.
Right, right, right. I'm just curious, you know, about how many, how many years that is. And I figured that's the person that would know best. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Great presentation, very clear.
Thanks, sir.
Very much.
Doing well, that's even better. That's the next career to me. But every year's unpredictable.
Now we're on to item number twelve, the annual report to the council on the pension fund with Pat Blizzard, leading us in that discussion.
How's everyone doing tonight? Thank you for having us here. My name is Pat Blizzard. You've seen me several times. And my associate, Mike Burke, Mike is the liaison between the advice group and the service team, which I work on. And Mike's going to start it off. We're just going to go through some market commentary. I'm sure you're all curious with what happened in November and December with a lot of volatility. But we'll speak through some of that and then I'll get into some of the numbers later on.
You shouldn't. I skimmed through all of that. There's no rocket science here.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time today. And we'll keep our comments reasonably brief. We won't take too much time. As you all know, there's been quite a bit of volatility in the marketplace. A lot of the numbers that are reported in our update are through the end of December. Thankfully, markets have recovered quite a bit since then. We still have some more room to recover. But a lot of the numbers and the volatility that we've seen is thankfully, you know, coming back into our favor, adding some more return to the plan. So through, you know, through last night with this morning, you know, again, being evidence that we continue to see quite a bit of volatility in the marketplace. So, and that's something that we haven't really felt for a number of years. Page six and seven, which I will speak to very briefly, really just highlight, when you look across many different corners of a well-diversified portfolio across stocks, both in the United States, large cap, small cap, international stocks, areas like commodities, it was a very difficult road, no matter where you were invested. There was really no place to be fully immune to the volatility that we saw, particularly during the fourth quarter. But when you include what we saw in February of two thousand and eighteen, a pretty choppy year. When we extend this to page seven and you see it in the bond market, you can really see what historically at times can sometimes show you some positive returns in areas like treasuries as investors really seek safety, some broader, more credit-oriented areas like high-yield bonds emerging market that really added to some of the negative returns that we saw. Something interesting is at the very bottom of this list, the Bloomberg Barclays U.S. Ag. That's basically the broad investment market for investment-grade fixed income in the U.S. The Barclays Ag usually is fairly positive in times of stress as investors kind of flock to safe haven assets like treasuries. But as interest rates rose during two thousand and eighteen with the Federal Reserve hiking and we saw a gradual kind of climb in interest rates, that resulted in a very flat experience. So when you think about a well-diversified portfolio, you saw negative return coming from many different areas. It wasn't just a single source of negative return dominating the experience that you see in the numbers. I won't spend too much time diving into each particular market, but I think it's worth spending a little bit of time on page twelve and thirteen. One is really just talking through this notion of diversification. This very colorful, very detailed chart that you see here really just highlights primary asset class returns over any given calendar year. And we call this kind of this return quilt. And then the important takeaway is many things that we looked at in two thousand and eighteen that were very, very poor performers, like international equities, for instance. We often get a lot of questions, like what's the role that that's playing in my portfolio? And we use this to remind investors that over time, as early as just simply last year, two thousand and seventeen, that was an area that was returning thirty-seven, twenty-five percent. So when we think about strategically investing money for a pension plan, it's very important to us that we strategically build this by portfolio that's very well diversified across all of these asset classes. And we, as a kind of fiduciary partner, are really not going to try to time this market as we see very, very strong bouts of volatility. We don't want to whipsaw the portfolio. We want to slowly and strategically think about what the best outcome is over the very long term. So today, in our meeting this afternoon with the investment committee, you know, we talked a lot about staying the course, maintaining the current allocation that we have, thinking about ways that we will continue to kind of capture value as we go forward. And as a reminder, SEI is a manager of managers. So when you look at our portfolio and you see ten to twelve different asset classes that you're investing in, underneath that are an additional four to six managers on average in each and every one of those strategies. So that translates to almost fifty or so managers, very well diversified across many of these asset classes. So we think the power of diversification in a model like this, over time, really adds value and in bouts of volatility can really mitigate some of these highs and lows that you see in the market. So very briefly on page thirteen, this is a very, another colorful chart that we're showing here. But it's a little bit of when you think about some key metrics. What is it that we expected when we looked at two thousand and eighteen? What did we actually see? And as we look forward in two thousand and nineteen, how are we thinking about the marketplace today? Some of the biggest takeaways is this is an environment where economic growth won't be as strong as it once was. There were a lot of factors like tax reform, like broad, this general synchronized growth that we saw coming into two thousand and eighteen that we certainly do not have today in today's market. Things like inflation, we believe, will still remain well in check, allowing a well-diversified portfolio to continue to kind of grind higher as we move into the later stages of this economic cycle. But we know that there's going to be a large degree or a high sensitivity to things like geopolitical risks. We think that's something that's escalating, that I think we can all see when we look at the news and local news and national news and even global news, when we look particularly in areas like the UK, across Europe, and particularly with us and certain trade relations and negotiations with the U.S. and particular China. So, you know, I think it all speaks to generally, though, this notion that investor sentiment is taking a little bit of a toned-down view. You know, I think investors were very bullish coming into this time last year. And we think that's going to be much more tapered. One thing that we don't really speak to or show on these two slides, which we do in many of the other slides that we do speak to and show, is two main things. One, all of this volatility that we've been seeing in the marketplace is, over the very long term, a fairly normal type of number. In fact, we were talking earlier today, on average, over the past thirty-plus years, in any given calendar year, the average sell-off in U.S. stocks and the S and P five hundred is about fourteen to fourteen and a half percent on average. It's just been a number of years since we've seen and felt that. It's been for some time, almost sub-five percent type of sell-offs in any one calendar year until this past one, where we saw two fairly meaningful sell-offs, one earlier and certainly one kind of closing the books of the calendar year. So we do feel like the environment we're seeing is still one that is a fairly normal environment over the very long term. And we're happy to see through January, we continue to kind of grind, grind higher. The very last one, I think, that gives us a little bit of confidence as well, is when we think about the backdrop, we still think that it's an environment for continued positive growth. The notion of the market feeling a little bit too expensive, as it was halfway through the year, as we were finding some of those peaks in the market this particular year. A lot of investors were asking, a lot of clients were asking us, how expensive is this market? Are we too expensive? Have we gotten a little too far ahead of where we should be? This particular sell-off has brought the valuations of the equity market into much more normal levels, one that we feel much more comfortable being investors in today. So for all of these reasons, we still believe in a well-diversified portfolio. But we're still being very active with what we're doing at that manager level to put us in the best chance to succeed going forward. With that, I think we'll get right to the numbers and hopefully that was a nice backdrop for the recharges that you said.
Yeah, I like, I like your quilt. It's a very good picture. I think, I personally, I think the market is more volatile than I've seen twenty years ago, maybe. I'd have to look back, but, you know, it's a hard one to analyze and make the very best choices on a day-to-day basis. You do the best you can. And I think as long as you are fairly conservative, which you are, because you're not going to be aggressive with city funds, you do what you do and hope nothing, you know, and hope there's not another PG&E out there declaring bankruptcy, you know, when they're supposed to be the rocks of the, of the investment market. And you can't control that. So overall, I think it looks pretty good. And I'd say absolutely stay the So overall, I think it looks pretty good, and I'd say absolutely stay the course, because I can't, you know, you can't do some of the creative things private individuals can do to, to step aside of the market and, and maybe do more. I don't, I don't think I saw any, I don't think I saw any real estate investment trusts in here.
You, you do have core property, which is a real estate investment.
Okay. That's, that's the only, because they, you know, I think that has, those have done reasonably well over the past several years.
That poses a return.
Yeah, so, you know, one's better than none. So, but I, I think, I think you've presented it very well. It's, you know, it's pretty clear to me, and, and just, you know, stay the course with a conservative philosophy, and I think we're doing the best we can. So, good job. Thank you.
Can you remind us of the breakdown? Equities versus fixed?
Yes, let's get to that right now.
Yeah.
There's a lot of extra slides in here you could take time to read.
Twenty-six.
So, page 26, you can see your asset allocation here. It's broken down. You have 55% equities, 30% in fixed income. Now, keep in mind, within fixed income, we have high-yield and emerging market debt in there, so while they are fixed income investments, they tend to be more volatile, but less volatile in equities as a whole. And then you have the core property fund, and then we have two other investments, which are kind of in that other category, which is our dynamic asset allocation fund, which is kind of where we have our short to medium best-term thinking in. That's one of the funds, actually, that hurt us from an underperformance standpoint, because we were actually, had a big value bias in that portfolio, where growth outperformed value tremendously last year. So we, we're going to keep that theme, because we think that's really where the market's going, where it hurt us last year. We've seen a, a nice comeback over the last three months there. And multi-asset return, that's more of an inflationary hedge. It's a good diversifier, it has commodities in it. So those are the main asset classes that you're in today, and you can see that core property there as well, the 5% allocation. Any questions around the asset allocation? Okay, so, the last three months were very difficult. You can see the plan was down 8.57% in those, that three-month period, which made your fiscal year-to-date come down, obviously, to around 6% there. That unfortunately has brought down your longer-term numbers. So looking at, if we took a snapshot at the end of 12/31/2017, you were north of 8% for your reception-to-date number, which was well in excess of your actuarial assumption rate, but just that, those two and a half months created all this noise in just two months. So you could, as Mike spoke to, a lot, we were in a bear market territory in a lot of the indexes, so, a lot of volatility. The good news is, I did put a portfolio note update in here, so you can see where you are, just month to date. So the plan's up about 3.64%. That was as of the 17th of January. So that was just three weeks where the market bounced back that quickly. So, that's actually a perfect example of not, trying not to time the market, because let's say you got out in mid-December, because you're in panic mode, when do you get back in? If you missed those three weeks, you missed out on a tremendous return. Again, this is your total plan level, but equities came back 8% to 10% in just that short period of time. So, that's, that's another good point, why, stay well-diversified, ride these lows out, and eventually, you know, we'll come back on top down the road, so.
I mean, there's an argument to be made that the city is not going to die, right? So, we're not looking at, we're looking at long-term every day, right? So, so there is an argument to be made for staying the course, right?
Exactly right. And just to get back to the, reduce the, the city reduced the actuarial assumption rate down, I'm seeing a lot of plans try to do that. Unfortunately, there's a lot of plans that are underfunded right now. They don't have the luxury of moving that number down. A lot of the reasons why they are, people are moving that number down is because, frankly, we don't expect those big double-digit returns that we've had over the last 10 years. Look at where fixed income interest rates are. I mean, the 10-year is at 2.71% today. So, it just, the fixed income portfolio, you're not going to generate a lot of returns. You're really relying on the equity side, and our equity returns are going over the next 10 years, we're looking at maybe 6% to 9%. So, when you have the opportunity to lower that actuarial assumption rate, I think it's a great thing, because down the road, it will enable us to de-risk. As rates start to go up, we could, we're able to de-risk the portfolio even more. So that's one of the primary reasons a lot of plans are doing, and unfortunately, there's a lot out there that just don't have that luxury.
So we lowered it to 7.25. Are you suggesting we consider lowering it further?
Uh, no, not at this point in time. We've already made that step. I think it was a good step. I mean, you don't want to really create a huge liability there. You saw the impacts earlier. What happens if you move it down 1%? It's, it's pretty significant, and your contributions will go way up, so.
And again, you're still one step ahead of most everyone else at this point, so.
Yes, absolutely.
You say that again loud. Feel good.
Because there, there are those plans in other states where they have much more aggressive profile in terms of the percentage of equities, right? And they're still underfunded, and they think they have to get more aggressive to try and catch up, but it's a chase-your-tail scenario. So, we're sitting in a good place with the right percentage of funding, with a, I would call them moderately conservative, you know, equities ratio, and you just have to, you know, you're going to hit a trough, you're going to hit a wave. You're going to hit a trough, you're going to hit a wave. But the goal is to equally fund every employee till the end, right?
And it's always interesting when you look at year-end numbers that just happen to be at a bottom of one of those, those troughs.
We're all looking at them.
We all are. Any questions around that? I just had one more slide I wanted to touch on. This is a slide, when we go through advice studies that we share with the PAC Committee, and essentially, we're just showing a distribution of returns for the portfolio you're in today. The left-hand bar is a short-term returns. You could see that the median is 5.9%. So when I was talking about expect at lower rates of returns for the next 10 years, that's that number. Over a longer term, we can support your 7.25% assumption rate with that 8%. But within these bands, obviously, more recently, because of what happened in the markets, we're at the tail bottom of that, that band right there. Not the very bottom, but we're there. So we're still within those bandwidths that we've talked about in all the meetings. We do expect, there's going to be volatility every once in a while. On average, every 18 months in the marketplace, there's some sort of correction that takes place. Frankly, it's healthy for the markets, because, as Mike mentioned, it resets valuations, and there's more opportunity sets open up.
So this is a nice tool to speak to how we work over with the actuarial, think about how we build the portfolio, but then to really make sure we all understand the range of potential outcomes, and what could be considered a longer than any one year, and are we keeping our eye on that any of the longer-term strategic goal that we're really trying to stick to over the long term. It serves a nice role of, we're putting all of that together.
Thanks. Out of curiosity, where do you guys work out of? Are you, you have a local office?
So we're based out of Philadelphia, which really-
Is that SEI's headquarters in Philly?
That's exactly right. That's our global headquarters. We've got some regional offices across the U.S. that's been west, so Chicago, as well as kind of a west coast presence in San Francisco, but primarily, the east coast is being run out of Philadelphia for us, so.
Is that where you came up from?
Yes, yes.
Came up to get cooled off.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did, you did a really good job and presented it very clearly.
I just have a few off-the-wall questions, right? Sort of related. Do, do you happen to have in the back of your mind the figure that represents the total of all 401K, 453Bs, 457Bs, like either for-profit or not-for-profit, tax-qualified retirement accounts in the U.S.? Any idea? Is it like $4 to $6 trillion, $10 trillion?
We're healthy in the tease at that point. I'd have to look and get back to you on that.
And this is the second one. Has anybody tried to measure what the net value is of all HSA accounts in the U.S. too? Health savings accounts? The ones where you take a high deductible, low premium, and then you, you pull a larger amount and put it into a tax, pre-tax?
And one, you can actually roll your assets.
And if you, and in most cases, if you have over $10,000, you can invest it in the, in the stock market. I'm, I'm just curious, I couldn't find that anywhere on the web, and I don't know where to look.
We can look for some of that data for you and get back to you.
I think so. I don't see anything else. Thank you for making the trip.
Thank you for having us. It was good to see a little bit of snow.
Stick around for a few more days, you'll see some more.
You'll get your share soon, I'm sure.
All right.
No good city goes untouched on the east coast from sub-snow.
We're going to move ahead to item number 13, and we are going to look at the annual city meeting ballot warning for 2019. There are several articles, including, of course, city councilors that are running, and the budget, but there is, there are these additional articles that we need to consider regarding the additional sales rooms, meals, and alcoholic beverages tax to finance voter-approved capital projects, which will require a charter amendment, as well as a municipal tax on short-term car rental sales within the city, which will also require a charter amendment. I did some information gathering ahead of time. So for our calendar, we can move to approve and then withdraw at a future date, as long as the ballots have not been printed. Because as you know, and this was the reason for my question, we're having two public hearings, one in a week and one in two weeks, on these two different articles. We can also alter the language up through the end of this week, and that's per the requirements of the state. So, with regard to early voting and all of that, so, just wanted to give you those parameters as we think about this, okay? We do have our city attorney here to, again, walk us through these articles, and the way that he has drafted them for us, and then we can have discussion about it.
Andrew Bollock, City Attorney. I just wanted to update you on kind of the amended language, the changes I made since our last discussion last week. I altered the language briefly in Article, so Article 3, talking about City Charter Amendment 1. Section 13, 1507, limited purpose sales rooms, meals, and alcoholic beverages tax. In Section A, there was some discussion about making it, it a little bit clearer that only after voter approval for financing would this local options tax trigger. So there was a formatting edit there, and a little bit of a language change. That's just in subsection A. I also added a new subsection C, based on comments that you had about the, about the language. I included what's essentially a definition for voter-approved capital project, so that the, the voters are aware of what specifically the council is talking about. I also re, so I have sort of a dictionary in the first, dictionary definition in the first clause, and in the second, I reference such as the four projects that have been discussed. So that's, you know, these are the types of projects that are, that we're talking about. So those are the changes to Article 3, the local op, the additional 1% tax. On Article 4, Section 13, going to be a new Section 13, 1508. I actually made some additional edits since the ballot went out, based on information received on the, the amount of money that could be generated from rental sales tax in the city. And I don't know, Kevin, if you want to touch on that at all.
Yeah, yeah. So, before you, you have the version that Andrew's talking about in your packet on your desk. You also have two letters, one from Enterprise Holding, Dean Thompson, and I think they're represented here tonight, and Sharon Faulkner from the American Car Rental Association, both commenting on the, on Article 4. Andrew alludes to some changes that, that we would like to promote, propose, partly coming from the Economic Development Committee, and partly coming from an updated evaluation of what would be raised from such a tax. Going first to the, what would be raised, you have, you should have before you memo from Andrew that states that the, in tax year 2017, total state tax revenues from car rentals, $4.2 million. So the state takes 9% on every car rental in the state. If we were to estimate, and this is just a, an estimate, that 75% of the total state car rentals occur in South Burlington, that 75% then of the full state take, tax take would be about $3.15 million. So, every, based on that 9%, for us, every 1% would generate about $350,000. Half a percent would be $175,000. So, we had an earlier projection, much, much lower than this. This has been updated today, thanks to Andrew's work. The Economic Development Committee, and I'll get back to these numbers, the Economic Development Committee met last night, and they said, they took a motion, and unanimously supported this provision, except that they wanted the ultimate percentage to be based on some level proportionality against impact. So the Economic Development Committee feels that there is an impact on our roads and on our public safety resources through the lease of rental cars in our community, but that the ultimate tax burden borne by those customers should be roughly proportional to what the impact is. So, at half a percent, it's $175,000, and that would be reflective of the impact on roads, other infrastructure, and our public safety associated with servicing those folks. So, to be consistent with what the Economic Development Committee is recommending, we're proposing that the number in the rental car, Article 4, be reduced to, up to 1% as a target, and our recommendation is that it be set at, ultimately be set by the, the city council at half a percent. So this is a change from what you saw in the first version, and what I would like to do is hand you out that, the new second version. I didn't want to confuse the two.
I'm unclear on what you just said, Kevin. Are you recommending 1% or half a percent?
The article says one, up to 1%.
Up to 1%.
Currently drafted as, as half a percent.
Oh, is it? Did you change it? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
So currently, we're, the city council may impose a half of 1% tax.
Oh, may impose, okay.
May impose.
May impose.
So it's 4.5% less than the original one?
Yeah, but, the original one was based on some faulty math.
Oh, okay.
And the other minor change is change from highway infrastructure tax, highway infrastructure and emergency services tax.
And why would we do highway infrastructure instead of paving specifically?
Paving could be included in infrastructure.
I mean, paving is the whole thing, right? Pothole filling, grading, you know, upgrading, maybe, if there was, if there was a water issue with a road, right? So there might be some related-
That's highway infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, like a culvert, maybe, or something like that, you know? Because, I mean, because paving is great, but if your road has got another issue, you need to fix that issue before you fix the paving, right? So.
Just looking for a direct relationship between what the wheels on these rental cars are doing and, and, you know, the impact.
Are we confident that, that the city would capture the full half percent? Or does the state want some of that?
The way it's been drafted, and, and conceptually, is that the city would administer it 100%.
The city would receive a full 0.5%?
Yes, and the city would administer that.
Does, does this have to go to the legislature?
Yes.
So do I have this right, that the, the ultimate dollar is $17,500, based on taking the $175,000 and-
Wait, no, that's the whole number, $175,000. That's a half, that's a half a pers-
It's a half a percent.
This is a full percent, and this is a half a percent?
Oh, that's a half a percent.
Expected revenue at a half a percent.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of this, I'm fine with a half percent, the 1%, I think it makes sense for a lot of different reasons, but I'm also supportive of just pressing the legislature, since 75% of the rental cars are in South Burlington, maybe we just need a larger part of the pot of the 9% that they're already collecting. But either way, we're bearing the brunt of these cars in our community, and I think we need- need some more to pay for our road infrastructure.
Oh, I just had a question.
Can you, can someone do the math for me again? Because one percent of three million dollars doesn't add up to three hundred thousand dollars to me.
One percent of three million, right.
Right.
The, the three million is, the three million is based on the nine percent tax that the state is, is charging.
Yeah.
So the, so the question was, what, what would one ninth of that be? So, so it's actually eleven point eleven percent of the three point six million, three point one five million is that number, the three hundred and fifty thousand, to represent one percent of, yeah, one ninth of that total number.
Okay.
Do you have a lot of confidence in these numbers?
That, that makes more sense to me now.
Yeah, the, the four point two million dollar comes directly from, the DMV actually administers this tax, not the Department of Taxes, and this number comes from one of their staff, staff people, so.
So the, the tax goes to the DMV?
That's who administers it, as far as I'm aware, yeah.
Interesting. So the, the car rental agencies, they remit this, this, no, they remit to this, to the state or to, well, you, just the DMV administers it?
They administer the tax.
Okay, okay.
They administer the program.
Okay. The other question I had was, how confident were, are we that, since this is applied evenly across all rental agencies in the city, that the airport and the FAA would not take special issue with it and, and then maybe enter in some legal thing?
It's our view that this is not a discriminatory tax.
Okay.
It applies to all car rentals in our community, not just those at the airport, not just those off the airport. If it were only confined to the airport, car rental agencies, there would be a case, but because it's applied across all rental agencies in town, it is not discriminatory in that way. I think the car rental folks would have a different opinion of that, but that's our opinion. And we have representatives here who would, who would want to speak to those issues.
I see your point, since it's evenly applied across, it just happens to be a larger share of the cars probably rented at the airport, that's all.
Maybe.
And you don't, I mean, you can't control which areas rent more cars than others, so.
So, so there, there are two issues here.
We'll let Kevin, and then we'll.
Do you wanna, do you wanna have folks talk about this issue and then get to the local option tax, or do you want to go to the local option? How would you like to proceed? Because there are people here who want to speak to the rental car issue.
Well, if they want to speak to that issue, and there's nobody that wants to speak to the local option tax.
Oh, I think there will be people for that, too.
Then it doesn't matter which order, which, I don't want to hold people here, if we can expedite it.
Well.
Doesn't matter to me.
Let's hear from the rental people.
Okay, let's, yeah, I think, take you one at a time. Was that, Mr. Marway, were you, if you could come up and identify yourself?
I'm sorry, one quick question.
Yeah.
Is it just cars or rental trucks?
Cars.
Just cars? Thank you.
Okay. Are there, yes.
This is sort of like coming home, even though I now live in Williston. I was in South Burlington for forty-five years, so it's, and was on the school board at one time here, so coming to meetings in South Burlington is sort of normal. I'm Jean Kennedy, and I represent Enterprise Rental Car as a lobbyist in Montpelier. I have a number of clients, and Enterprise is one of them, and has been my client since the early nineties, and I'll let John introduce himself.
Yeah, my name is John Cook, I'm the area manager for Enterprise Holdings in northern Vermont, so anything, basically Burlington, Montpelier, and north of that.
You do have a letter from us that I, I think you all have it, that Dean Thompson sent to you the end of last week, and there are two points that we'd like to make tonight, but I'll tell you just two or three little bullets about us. We're the largest rental car company in South Burlington, and we've been here since nineteen ninety-three, and Enterprise, our brands now are Enterprise National and Alamo, so it's not just Enterprise. And we have thirty-four employees in South Burlington, twenty-three are at the airport, and eleven in, on Williston Road, between Williston Road and Shelvin Road. Forty percent of our South Burlington rentals are to Vermonters, and they're to people who are using the roads anyway, they're not visitors coming here. Now that switches when you look at just airport and off airport, but at the airport, only eleven percent of the customers are Vermonters, but that means off the airport, eighty-three percent of the customers, customers are Vermonters, and I think John can tell you a little bit better, the type of Vermonter that usually rents a car.
Yeah, so typically, the Vermonters that are renting at our local Enterprises are, for two reasons, majority of which are replacement vehicles, they're vehicles in the shop, so either their insurance is paying for it, or it's going through a dealership or some sort of replacement vehicle, so it's actually essentially replacing their vehicle, which would normally be on the road, and then also people running for work purposes, so you have to travel on a work trip, then you're, you're traveling with a rental car versus your personal car. So that's the vast majority of it, and majority of those are replacement vehicles, so people who are involved in some sort of accident or mechanical issue with their vehicles.
Unfortunately, I had one of those about three years ago and had a car for forty days because of a bad accident that I was in, at the same time I was moving, life is not fair sometimes. So one of the reasons that we, we oppose this tax is because we do believe, and have always believed, Enterprise's business has been built on that local rental, and it is a lot of local South Burlington people who will be paying that increased tax. And I know it, it got a lot smaller tonight, a few minutes ago, but it's not so much the size as, as the fact, for our second reason, or our first, whichever way you put it, is we disagree politely with the legal points made about whether or not this was discriminatory. The way our attorneys have looked at it is that language that's in the letter that, that says, federal law says that such a tax cannot be imposed unless wholly utilized for, on an airport business, unless wholly utilized for airport or aeronautical purposes, and we, so we believe that the portion that would be in the airport, and I heard what the attorney said, our attorneys read that differently, and we think that portion of it would be against the law. So it, it, we really are opposing it for those two reasons, the use of the, our rental cars by so many local people, and more importantly, we think, at least our attorneys have told me, that they believe that imposing such a tax on the airport portion of the business would be against the law.
Well, the state nine percent, that's applied across the state, and that's not seen as discriminatory here.
Yes, but the way this is, and I think you'll see it in the letter, it's, except for those imposed by the state. It, it was a federal law passed in two thousand eighteen, I believe, so, and it's in the letter that I believe you've got, all gotten, have you all received?
I think there's some other provisions of the law that are, that are relevant here, but.
And lawyers will battle that out, I'm sure, as this goes forward.
So does Burlington gets no part of the four dollars per car? It all goes to the airport?
That goes to the airport, is my understanding, it's in two different funds at the airport. One is for, I, don't hold me to this, but my understanding, and this has all been happening since last Thursday night, so I've been learning a lot, part of it is for a facility that's being built at the airport for all the car rental agencies, they are to, for car wash. And the other part, the other two dollars, I think, is for other general airport maintenance. It does not go to the city of Burlington.
And that's only applied at the airport rental location?
Yes.
Right, yes, it's only at the airport, yeah, it's a different.
Owned by the city of Burlington.
Yeah, so that's not past, that's not affecting the local renters in South Burlington, yeah, at the local enterprise location, just the airport, if they choose to go there.
So in a world where the city of South Burlington, if we own that airport, would we be able to collect those fees, in your interpretation, and then use them to spend on South Burlington roads, since they're collected by the airport and the roads are used by the rental cars?
I have no idea, because we don't, we don't own the airport, so I'm not sure.
It seems to make sense, right?
I don't know that, but I can, I can run that question by both the tax people in, in Montpelier and Dean Thompson at Enterprise. And I know, having lived here as long as I did, that who owns the airport is a bone of contention, and a difficult, financial difficulty for the, for the community, but in this particular case, we do feel that we need to disagree with you on that. It's not, it's not the amount of the tax, you know, I think you might think that, oh, they'll be happy now, it's not five percent, it's only a point five percent, but it's the, we just believe that it should, legally it should not be imposed, and it will be borne by a lot of people of South Burlington.
Correct.
Our roads are some of the most heavily traveled roads in the state, and it certainly has to do with all the travelers, including Vermonters who travel on our roads, and they do not all come from our municipality, and so there is, I see some, you know, real justification for us to consider this tax, in order to have the, the cost of the wear and tear of our roads be borne by the users of those roads, and those are cars, right, car drivers, so there does seem to be, to my mind at least, some, you know, kind of obvious justification for the city to be able to have some of its costs covered by the users that include the, the rental car users of the roads. And to, to be honest, when I was doing the math in my head, five percent, I was thinking how much that would cost per day, and to take that down another notch, it's, it's pennies, it's pennies per day that somebody would be paying in order to rent a car and drive on our roads, right, whether to go to work or to, to go somewhere else in the state, or, right, or as I know, as we've done, you know, even across the border, and to go into Quebec, so there, there are, I think, you know, reasons for this council to consider this task.
I, I wouldn't think that there aren't reasons for you to consider it, that's part of your work and your, your responsibility here, but what I'm saying about the local use of it is that those are people who are using rental cars when they don't have their own cars to use, but if they weren't using the rental car, they'd be using their own car. I mean, it's the same person driving the car, whether it's a rental car, or, I'm not going to use a rental car more or less than my own car. So I, I don't see the correlation the same way, which is why we have different deliberative bodies, but I, and I, I was trying to think today, as I was thinking about this issue, of other types of businesses that come in and, into our city a lot, and use the roads a lot, and I, but I don't know how they're taxed, or how they pay fees or anything, but, you know, taxis and things like that. So a lot of people use the roads in the whole, in the entire community, but a lot of the people using our rental, at least Enterprise rental, are local people who would be driving a car in the road anyway, so it's, it may be a fine difference, but we consider it a major difference in the people that we rent to.
You are correct, and an awful lot of people use roads, I apologize, I had to return a call before nine o'clock deadline, and I had to get on and do it, but we actually considered putting tolls on Dorset Street and Spear Street, and we collect all the money from the people south of us coming.
Well, I actually said that last Friday, I said, why, I was talking to a South Burlington representative, I said, well, why don't you just put up tolls?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, because so much, so much of the traffic doesn't come from South Burlington that's on our, on our roads, and we live with that. Do you know how many rental cars there are? You may have said this, and I wasn't in here, how many rental cars are there a year that are rented in South Burlington? Any idea at all, ballpark? I mean, I don't know if it's ten thousand or forty-five thousand.
Like, how many transaction, rental transactions?
How many cars are there?
I mean, I can tell you right now how many are in the state of, in Vermont, so I, in South Burlington alone, you want to know?
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
I probably have like, should be eight hundred from Enterprise Holdings, and then the rest of the state is probably about, currently, maybe twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, the rest of the state that's not in South Burlington, roughly, I mean, it could be, it fluctuates a lot depending on the time of year and.
But only eight hundred from Enterprise Holdings on an annual basis?
Yeah, there's still hurts to go along with that.
Yeah, this is just Enterprise Holdings, yeah, I mean.
But that's three of them, right? That's, that's.
That's National Alamo, yeah.
Yeah, and if you had to guess, how much do the others contribute? Equal amount, or?
I have no idea how much they contribute, I mean, Enterprise is definitely the, the largest by far, but, yeah, I would have to, I mean, as I said, the amount of vehicles and transactions fluctuates a lot depending on the time of year, and the weather can affect it a lot, too.
Absolutely.
So John, are you saying that the, based on those, then our seventy-five percent projection is probably all?
I, I would, I think you should check that before you go, before you completely go forward with this, and I, if you would like, Kevin, I can do some preliminary asking about that tomorrow when I'm in the State House, because I think the Tax Department must also, or DMV, one or the other must have that. Just for your information, the, the car rental tax for years has been dedicated to the Education Fund, but what, what happened to it was it went in the General Fund, and then you had to go through a process every year of having a motion in the budget, or in one of the budgets, to move it from the General Fund to the Education Fund, so now it goes, starting last year, just directly to the Education Fund, that nine percent that they get, that four point two million.
What about DMV involved with it, man?
Pardon?
How's the DMV involved with it?
Well, I don't know, it's, you know, people that work in certain places, I, who knows, it's state, it's state government.
Has it always gone to the Education Fund?
I don't know if it's always, but for quite a long time, maybe not when you were there.
No, I thought we, I thought it went, at that time, I thought it went to Transportation Fund, yeah.
Yeah, and that was a big fight, you can picture.
Always a big fight, remember, when something's going to go to the Transportation Fund that could be used elsewhere.
Right.
That's one of those that never ends.
But I did check with the Chair of Senate Appropriations last week to see where it went, and she told me it all goes to the Education Fund.
It's not the driver education fund, it's the education.
Yes, it is.
Tom had a question.
So if the nine percent goes to the general ed fund, this, the airport is currently assessing a fee, is it a percentage fee, is it a per fee, is it a four dollar per rental fee, and where does that go? And if I, it's going to a car wash, I would, it just makes more sense to go to the roads that serve the airport, so.
To get a car wash?
I thought you said something about a new car wash.
Well, it's just, it's used for different, I believe, projects, you could maybe exactly more detail, but the airport uses it for maintenance, and different things they need around the airport.
Around the airport?
Yeah.
So maybe we just need that money to go to the roads serving around the airport?
There was a DRB application that included like a reconstruction of a brand new building and a car wash, and a maintenance, light maintenance repair facility, you know?
It was heard last week.
It was what?
It was heard last week.
Again? Because it was never built, so they had to bring it back again?
They made some changes.
Okay, okay, but that was three years ago that they imposed that.
Yeah, it's been going on for several years.
We have a unique ownership situation.
So the, so the car comes back, they have to wash it, you know, fuel it up, because there's a filling station, too, and then stick it back in the garage.
The point I make is we have a very unique ownership situation, and if nationwide, if it's more common that those fees that are permitted based on the legislation, the language that you offer here, is used to fund the roads serving the airport, maybe we just need to press that, too, to get those fees that the airport's collecting to pay for airport parkway and all the other road maintenance that we have to spend a lot of money on every year to serve all the cars that go in and out of the airport.
Well, is there a car wash now?
Or Williston Road.
Or Williston Road.
Do you have to pay the airport to use that car wash, or?
No, it's, it's an existing one facility, that's been there for a while, they just, they just want to update it and replace it.
But, but do you have to pay to use it?
I'm not sure the exact agreement on that, I have to, I could, we can look into it and find out, but.
So where are the cars refueled?
It's on site.
On the airport as well?
Yeah.
Do you, is the airport administer that?
It's a, it's a shared facility for all the rental car companies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they just, it's shared, they're all running next to each other.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you for giving us time tonight, I appreciate it.
Oh, of course, thank you for coming forward.
And, and, could you tell me again when the public hearing's on?
Yes, January twenty-eighth and February fourth, and I believe at seven thirty they start.
Where do you have it?
Here.
Here.
And our meetings start at six thirty.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, good to see you.
Seven, thank you, at seven o'clock, thank you, thank you.
I have a new estimate. At half a percent, and half, assuming half the rentals, half, it's one hundred and sixteen five.
Hundred what?
Hundred sixteen five.
Hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, at a half a percent, at a half a percent, with half of the cars being rented in South Burlington.
That's still a guess, because you just guessed.
Right.
We don't know the fifty percent, but it's, it sounds more accurate from what John's.
Yeah, well, a half a percent is a lot more palatable than five percent. I, I mean, I'm willing to let the voters, you know, look at that. I mean, I'm willing to let the voters, you know, look at that. My only question is, this is the 2019 March budget vote for the city and the school, and these possible warrants, right? What's our, what's our average annual percentage turnout of voters? See, my worry is that, right, you'll have this 30 percent turnout or whatever, you know, for the March 5th election?
Let's hope, that would be a good turnout.
That's what I'm saying, let's say it's 20 percent, right? But those are the people that would decide whether or not to let the extra taxes, right? And it's not, you're not even getting close to half the registered voters, so, but...
Yeah, they will be determining our budget, our city budget, and who represents them as well.
I know, so you just guess that there's a good mix of people to, you know, that, anyway.
No, I encourage everyone to get out and vote, that's for sure.
I do, too, I do, too, and there are some sticks in the mud that...
To your point, Tim, I think what you're alluding at is there's usually a low turnout on Town Meeting Day, and maybe if we don't need to act upon this now, but can start the conversations, it could go on a later ballot vote, and just, again, we could press the case in the legislature for getting the funds from the airport or also from the 9 percent that they're already collecting, because if 75 percent of the rental cars are out of our city, we deserve more resources to support those.
Thanks, Tim.
So I see your point in wanting to let the voters weigh in on this, and I generally support assessing a fee on these rental cars, but I also am open to delaying or having a longer conversation on this over another year or so. Again, pressing the case in the legislature with all of the influence that we have from previous legislators on this body, both Helen and Dave, but I think there's an argument to be made that we need more resources to come to SB.
Yeah, I tend to think we probably don't have all the information we need to put this on the ballot right now. There's a few too many, and we've got a deadline, right?
This Friday for the language, but we can always withdraw up until the ballot's printed.
Yeah, I know. The ballot's printed, which is probably going to be...
Did you get that date from Donna?
No, Donna's not here. She's back tomorrow. She's back tomorrow.
I don't wonder, I didn't hear back from her. So, I mean, what are you, what are you...
Well, I think, do you want to, do you want to hear on the local option tax part?
Sure, I don't, yeah...
Do this all at once at the end?
Something that Helen said to keep in mind, too, I spoke with her on the phone, was that just getting this passed and passed by the voters does not mean that it is done whatsoever, that this could very well take a long time in the legislature. So there's something to be said for getting the ball rolling as well. I mean, this...
Very true.
This is something I think...
On that point, I could also see a case being made that if we press the legislature to get more of that 9 percent, or we press the legislature to get the airport to give us whatever they're collecting to pay for our roads, and that hit goes nowhere, then I could see us coming back to, well, then we want to put this to the voters to assess a rental fee tax. So I could see it going either way. We either press the case in the legislature and then go to the charter change to raise the 1 percent, or we continue on the current trajectory, which is putting it forward this March.
I tend to think, just based on the discussions that were had last year around the airport, that taxes may be a cleaner discussion, but that is, there's, you know, a municipal entity that owns an airport, and so my understanding of the conversation is that, that happened last year, is that for the legislature to come in and intervene in a municipally-owned entity is something that is distasteful to a number of legislators, so...
I'd love to talk more about it, but maybe that was not the time.
Yes. So whereas I think that the case where these cars are obviously contributing to the wear and tear on our roads is a clear-cut case.
That's a clear cut.
It is, but as, well, I don't know how many rental cars there are in total. Enterprise is 800, I don't know how many others there are. I mean, 800 cars is not a whole lot of cars, considering how many residents we have and how many transits there are probably over those streets like Airport Parkway, et cetera. There's probably many, many, many times that, you know, it's probably, this is probably a minuscule impact, so, but I don't know how many total rental cars there are. So I'm saying, I'm not sure we have all the information to make a good decision right now. But we do have to decide tonight whether to put it on or leave it off, so why don't we do the, why don't we hear from the other folks, everybody can, nobody has to sit around, and then we can talk about it for a few minutes, is that...
I'll just say, I support, I would put this, I would vote for this, just because you've got to fly the kite and get it through legislature and then see if the winds blow it into a legal challenge, you know, so that's going to happen sooner or later, right? So I would say, fly the kite now, see what happens, right?
I tend to sit there as well.
It's a half a percent, it's not a whole lot.
It's pennies per day, literally, it's 15 cents per day.
Yeah. No, I don't have any argument with that.
Yeah, I mean, average Enterprise car costs, what, 30 bucks a day?
Right, right, so it's 15, right?
Yeah. I think it's very fair, it's very fair for what it would do for the highway, you know, for the DPW and roads.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tim.
Give it a try.
I don't care about that.
For whatever that's worth.
I don't care about that.
Mostly because it went from five to a half, you know? I mean, five, I was like, whoa. And maybe, you know, whether it's five or a half, it will suffer the same, you know, consequence whenever it goes to the next stage, we'll see.
All right.
Okay.
So the other topic of conversation is the rooms and meals and sales tax, and if there are people here in the audience who would like to speak to that, please feel free. Okay.
Well...
Then we can speak to that.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a whole lot of wording changes, how do we want to deal with that?
A lot of wording changes?
Yeah, I think I counted 15 here that I made.
You're more adept than our learned city attorney on wording changes, sorry.
I don't know.
Andrew, you want to come up?
I mean, do we want to, you told me to sit with Andrew and go through them and discuss them, or you want me to go through?
Tonight's the night, I mean, you got to, whatever you change in this will be recorded tonight and signed off on tonight.
Okay, you want me to go through what I adjusted?
Sure.
And I'm not quite, you said you added a section C there for some clarification. Here's what I did, and you can say right or wrong, it's allowed, not allowed, makes more sense. So on A, only after voter approval for financing, it says of capital projects, I said of one or more specific capital projects. I just thought that was more, I said so, of one or more specific capital projects within the city. Then on the next paragraph, it says the city council may assess an up to 1 percent tax in addition to the rates authorized under section 131506 of this chapter. I thought section 131506 of this chapter needs an explanation, because the vast majority, almost everybody who's going to vote is not going to know what that means. So how can that be explained? Can you put something in parentheses, or how do you do it?
Well, this is...
What the chapter is, what it's referring to?
Yeah, nobody's going to know. It says to the rates authorized under section 131506, nobody's going to know what that means.
But recognize, so Dave, that this is the, this is the actual charter change.
Yeah.
I don't know that we want to have lasting, forever, that language, there needs to be educational...
You could say of this chapter in the city charter, is that what you wanted, to make it more explicit?
Yeah, maybe of this chapter in the city charter, would that, would that be all right? I mean, people are going to look at this and they don't know what the heck it means.
Yeah, but...
This is an ongoing issue for ballot language.
Yeah, I know.
But you know the distinction I'm making.
Yeah, I absolutely do.
This is going to, right, be in state law.
But this is what people are going to vote on.
Right.
And somebody's going to look at it and say, that's under second, well, I'd just look at it and say, what the heck does that mean, I'm not voting for this.
But that was the same for the community building.
Yeah, I, well, that, that we did a lot more work on, the library, I mean, is somebody actually going to launch a campaign to, you know, and really work on this educationally? I'm not betting on that, as we did with the community center, so I have a concern, people are going to look at it and not know what it means, and they're just going to vote against it. I don't think that's necessarily a good thing.
So the blank...
So I don't know how you handle it.
The blank for the date?
You're out there on the roads, knocking on doors, Dave, aren't you going to be talking about this?
Yeah, right. You want me to go through the rest of them and see what you, what you think? So after that, it says a comma, on those transactions, I put on those purchases, because it's all going to be on purchases, right? In the city, instead of involving, I put subject to, because it doesn't involve sales rooms, it's subject to sales rooms, meals, and alcoholic beverage taxes, right? And I didn't do any more damage on that one.
We have subject to afterward, Dave.
Yeah, I left it both. I thought that was fine.
On that sentence, if we could all just chime in here, I can't vote to move this forward unless that word "sales" is removed. And I have a whole statement, it's on my Facebook page, and I can read it if you all want, but I will not move this forward if it's a sales option tax. I'm uncomfortable with the rooms and meals, I'm comfortable with alcohol, but I don't want us to be the most taxed community in the state, and sales taxes are regressive, and I can go through my whole spiel, but for me to get behind this, if you need my vote, I need the "sales" word removed.
Yeah, but if rooms and meals, I mean, then you're, I mean, meals, 90 percent of the meals tax is paid, I believe, by instaters, so...
So Burlington is 12 percent, you want to hear my whole spiel?
Oh, my God, no.
Is it double spaced or single spaced?
The voters have a right to know, you can go to my Facebook page if you want to see it, but here on the record...
It's your choice, it's your choice.
Do you want to let Dave finish?
Sure, go ahead, but that's the key for me, that sales piece right there.
Okay, so under number one below, under B1, service and retire, instead of any debt, I put all debt, isn't it going to be all debt that you want to retire?
Okay.
Incurred for financing specific capital projects, I just thought that was more clear, approved by the voters, and then it says within 10 years from the first, from there to the end is totally going to confuse everybody. You got to think of a better way to word, within 10 years from the first voter-approved capital project after adoption of this section's got to, it's got to be a better way to word that. To me, that's Greek. Well, I don't have a suggestion for that, because I can't figure out how to reword that.
There's two things going on here, you're voting on a charter change, the charter, the ballot item, maybe...
It's going to read like this.
No, I know, but I'm thinking, so we have these, we have these public hearings, where we're going to talk about what these, what this charter change actually means in more lay terms, right? There are going to be articles in the other paper. So, I mean, some of the charter change is sort of legalese, you know, I mean, and it has to be...
That indeed it is.
It has to be specific, right? So it's going to confuse some people anyway. But I like the attempt you're making to make it more, either more explicit...
If that last phrase, from within to the end, can be, can be more explicit, clearer, so be it. If it can't, leave it. Let me go on to number two. The only thing I did in number two is at the very end, not to exceed 10 percent of the total voter-approved debt incurred for the specifically-approved capital project.
The Chair of our Charter Committee might have a suggestion or something else to...
Testify.
Peter Taylor, please, just...
Peter Taylor. You could say, within 12 years, period. You're going to get your first project approved within two years, or it's probably not going to happen. So just add two years under the 10, and we've got your defined period, and it removes all the other language, justify.
That would be my suggestion, too, would be actually giving a time certain...
So service and retire, all debt incurred for financing specific capital projects approved by the voters within 12 years?
Period.
I suppose the loan is for 15 years.
Yeah, that would, that might preclude us from paying all the debt.
Well, good, then we're free and clear, and somebody got screwed out of their money.
Worked that way, Dave.
That wasn't my intention, I think that was what I had to do, is just add two years to the 10 years, instead of saying from the first approved.
Right.
Maybe you can't do it that way.
Well, this, this doesn't say that you only pay for 10 years, it says for any project approved within 10 years from...
Right.
Yeah.
All I was saying was try and word it a little bit better, that's it.
You've got 10 years to, you've got some time till you approve your first project, and you have 10 years until you approve the last one, and this can be used for any of those projects, to service and retire the debt. It doesn't say when it sunsets at all.
Right.
It is confusing.
I was just making a point that it was confusing, that's it.
Right, right, right.
So under, I'll just finish, and then you can do it to long.
It doesn't say that you would sunset the tax, though, does it? Or is it implied that when you finish servicing all the debt, you would sunset the tax, or do we need to add that as a specific item?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly implied, it's not explicit.
It's implied?
Yeah.
If I were a voter, I would want to see that it explicitly says, you know, this tax shall be sunset upon retirement of the final debt incurred within the 10 or 12-year period, whatever it is.
I do like that language, yes.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let me just finish three things, then we can go back and talk about whatever you want, but this will get rid of my notes. Is that all right?
Yeah.
So I said under two, right before the end, for the specifically-approved capital project, and it does set it for the, so it's got a relationship, is that all right, or is that...
Specifically voter-approved capital...
Yeah, sure, for the specifically voter-approved capital project.
Sure.
And the next one, at the end of the second line, we say intended to accelerate economic growth. Some people may take that the wrong way, I would say encourage instead of accelerate, is that allowed?
Okay.
And then where you have such as, on the next line down, city in reason such as, I put for example instead.
Okay.
I think that's just worded better. And then I think I might put, at the very end, comma, a mixed-use arena facility, comma, et cetera. I just, otherwise people will think it's just limited to those four things.
That's what I kind of want.
So...
So we'll have to discuss.
Oh, then you can, Lee, I don't care, I just thought you might just give the wrong impression.
Yeah.
I mean, there might be something else that comes along, but it doesn't have to be, those are my suggestions.
Okay.
Mostly strictly for clarification purposes.
Sure. So...
So we have Dave's, let's hold off the opposition until the, until just a minute, let's just word Smith a little bit, and then we can discuss the sales versus the rooms, meals, and beverages. Where are we sitting? We have, as long as there's not sales, how much time do we want to spend? I, I, okay, I'll start. Just like the penny for paths, to be honest, although I would think that investing in our cycling infrastructure would, in the long run, save the city a lot of cost and, you know, non-tangible cost. I thought it was something that had to be put to the voters. I really thought that this was something that was a big chunk of change that we were asking, and it made perfect sense to have the voters determine that, right? And this is the same thing, we're asking for a chunk of change for a long-term benefit, right? And I do believe that a City Center for the Arts project will have a long-term economic benefit. And it's, I think, been longstanding that this community has wanted a recreation center. And this is a way also, and we need to have this discussion with the school board, but as we've heard from our city manager and from members of the various bodies that have been putting these proposals together, who have talked with the school administrators, who have talked with the school administrators, these two facilities, we are told, would be of great benefit to the schools and would potentially save the property taxpayers when the schools are coming to the end of their visioning. So that's a lot, right, and a mouthful, but nevertheless, this is a big chunk of change that we're asking for, that we believe, if we pass this, will, in the long term, you know, really pay off for our community, right? And I'm willing to put this to the voters for that, just like I was willing to put the penny for paths to the voters.
There's a difference in that if we put this to the voters and it's approved, we still don't have to do it.
That's very true.
It's still got to get approved by the legislature.
Right.
So we've got a long ways to go.
Oh, we have a superlative.
And each project would have to be approved. So there's nothing in here, that's, I don't know where that becomes clear, that, you know, you don't want people to get this and walk into the, into the voting booth and think, oh, another tax, we're stuck with it, because they're not. This is just step one that may or may not come to pass. I don't know how you get that through.
And it's based in, right, whether or not we pass also the municipal infrastructure, right? So this isn't just the one public vote. It's then a vote to get that first project off the ground. And if we never get a project off the ground, as Peter says, if it doesn't happen within the first two years, it will probably not happen, right?
I just see a difference in your comparison that the penny for paths, I see bike paths as part of our essential services, our roadways, street safety, bicyclists, pedestrians. That's part of our core functions of being a municipal entity, is police, fire, and roadways. I'm, may I make my statement now, which I think speaks also to that?
You're going to read that whole thing?
I'm going to read it, because people have a right to know where I stand on issues and votes like this, so I like to organize my thoughts. I definitely believe that sales taxes are regressive. A family making fifty thousand dollars a year is going to buy as many pairs of jeans, holiday presents, and cups of coffee as a family making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Yet five hundred dollars of sales taxes is proportionally a lot more to a family making fifty K than it is to a family making two hundred and fifty K.
Jeans aren't taxed.
Sales, sales.
Jeans, clothing is not taxed.
Okay, sure. But what is taxed are all the other consumable items that are sales items. For that reason alone, I don't support raising our local sales option taxes on SB residents or any of our visitors. This tax would make South Burlington the most taxed city in the state, and that will drive businesses and residents from our city, putting a larger tax burden on those who remain. I also don't putting, I also don't support putting this local sales option tax forward, the local sales option tax, to the voters, because the projects considered with this language, in my opinion, are outside the scope of our essential service responsibilities, police, fire, and roads. The argument has been made that thirty million dollar performing arts center would benefit the regional economy through increased cultural activities, ticket sales, restaurant visits, foot traffic, and our pedestrian market areas. I find flaws in that argument, because if this is truly a regional initiative, the region should really pay for it, not the taxpayers of South Burlington. Related to this, our city doesn't own any land or building that could serve as a performing arts center to serve our region for this very important cultural need, but Burlington does. The Memorial Auditorium is a municipally-owned, ideally-located, underutilized facility. I, as an SB taxpayer and elected city councillor, do not want to build a competing municipal facility two miles down the road. As for the recreation center, I support moving this forward, but that would serve SB needs, so we should pay for it through traditional measures, not with new taxing authority. We also already own the land where this could go and would fit very nicely on Veterans Memorial, but I don't think we should spend twenty million on it. I think we need to sharpen our pencils and scale the project back, but I'm always saying that, and there's always ways to find cuts. In my four years on this council, I've learned a lot. I've come to conclude that our residents want good schools, safe streets, and low taxes. Our residents cherish their elementary schools, and I've had many parents tell me how concerned they are with encroaching development pressure on the Rick Marcot Central School property. I don't know where this performing arts center might be envisioned to be located, as we've not been presented that information, but I know I wouldn't support it being on any of the Rick Marcot property, just to speak that clearly to any resident wanting to know, would not. I would not support that being on any part of the Rick Marcots property. What I do support in this language is to, is to increase our rooms and meals taxes, and this is to the earlier point, Dave, not our sales taxes, to be the same as Burlington. Currently, Burlington, I'm under the impression, charges twelve percent, one percent more than us. That's my understanding from previous presentations. Our hotels and restaurants serve the greater Burlington market. The Burlington Sheraton has always been located in South Burlington, so it's only fair to have parity with our neighboring and economically dominant neighbor. This additional one percent... What? Now it's the Doubletree, but it was always the Burlington Sheraton. The additional one percent could generate one point five million annually, which we would directly reduce the amount our residents, me, you guys, pay with our property taxes. These hotels and restaurants generate a lot of vehicle traffic, road wear, and first responder incidents. We don't need to look too far back in the recent history to validate those statements. So I think it's fair to use this assessment in parity with Burlington on rooms and meals. And to your previous point, you can go eat somewhere else, like in Williston, where there isn't the one percent if you want, and you can also eat elsewhere and avoid the tax if you really don't want to pay your rooms and meals. But since we're part of the greater Burlington area, and Burlington does it, I see value in the parity to generate more funds to pay for the roads and the incidents that these establishments incur. But I don't support raising our retail sales option tax to be the highest in the state, causing our community to be the most expensive to live and operate in. I also support taxing rental cars in South Burlington. I support that. Right now, our cities and roads are only paid for by our property owners, and these roads are expensive, paving, curb, sidewalks, plowing, salting, street sweeping is expensive, and some entities in SB aren't paying their fair share for the cost of road maintenance. Many of these rental cars are not registered in Vermont, so they aren't contributing at point of sale, and they're also not paying the annual state registration fee. So I will vote yes to move forward the second motion, and I think that was a healthy discussion tonight. I was elected to study the issues and nuances of our city budget and to represent the interests of our residents. I am not here to debate these issues, because I found on this council, the more I try to convince others, the less convincing I am. So I will leave with this. God willing, I'm going to be living in South Burlington for at least another twenty-five years, and as a resident and a city councillor, I do not want to pay another one percent on everything I buy here or have shipped to my home, nor do I want to support building a thirty million dollar facility to compete with Memorial Auditorium two miles down the road. Burlington gets more in local sales option taxes and owns a perfectly-sized facility and land for this cultural need. I encourage the proponents of this facility to press for a performing arts space in a revitalized Memorial Auditorium, or to pursue the school district to engage, and I would support this, a performing arts center attached to any new high school build. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I would love the city to contribute to that, and the land is there, so if it was on the high school property. So I will encourage this council to not make South Burlington the highest taxed city in the state, and if the sales option increase taxes in this motion, I will not vote to move it forward.
I think Burlington's eleven percent and not twelve percent.
Okay, so we're at ten. I'm under the impression we're one percent less than Burlington.
And then my other comment is with Amazon, correct me if I'm wrong, but when Amazon does charge sales, state sales tax, they only charge the six percent, I believe, right?
No, they ask for the zip code.
They have to charge what's based on the zip code.
They do?
I believe so.
I asked that at the last meeting, and I was told it was based on the zip code, so we will pay it if we ship it to our house, is what I was told.
To be honest, I always choose to shop in South Burlington when I can, because I'd rather pay taxes to my city, so...
I just got a thing in the mail from your book wholesaler, six percent, even though I live in Burlington.
But it's supposed to be seven percent.
Maybe it's supposed to be, but that's what they're telling me to pay.
When, when Amazon doesn't charge you, when it, so on your Vermont state sales tax, you're supposed to identify, declare that percentage, that amount, that you should have paid. But I think they only demand that you declare the six percent, not the seven percent, if you live in a, in a, in a, in a city that has...
What, you mean on the state tax form? I don't know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I think...
Almost everybody now that you buy from online is charging your sales tax, so it's really, it's rapidly...
It's third-party. That's the problem. It's third-party people, Amazon, don't always, there's some weird rules. If they don't do too much business, they don't have to remit. So anyway, but the point is that if you don't, if you're not charged the sales tax, then you pay six percent of the state, right, which you declare on your tax at the end of the year. If it is charged by Amazon, and you're shipping to South Burlington, you're probably charged seven percent, in which case, the state's supposed to get the one, and we're supposed to get seven tenths of that.
Okay, so the economy is part of our purview. Are we agreeing on that? Because I have to say, I agree with everything except the economy is part of our purview, I really do think. And if we think about what an arts center will bring, right, it will bring people who are walking.
The regional economy, is there something?
Well, regional, but also city, right? And talking about sales tax, talking about rooms and meals, right? So just take an example. When I go downtown to the Flynn, do I just park and go straight to the Flynn? No, usually I'm going to combine that with a meal. Maybe I'll stroll up Church Street, and I'll go into a store and say, oh, that would be nice for my aunt or my mom or whatever, and I will pick something up, right? Because I have a half hour before the show begins, right?
Burlington doesn't own the Flynn, though, and the one facility they own has been shuttered for a few years.
But look what the Flynn does for their economy and for their tax base. And that's what this arts center is proposing to do for our economy and our tax base. And I think that that is part of our purview, and I think that's why I voted to put before the voters the community center, too, because that would get foot traffic down in an area where I want people walking around, stopping in a store, going in for a sandwich or coffee or whatever it is, because this is something that is keeping us thriving as a community. And this is another such service that we, as a community, I think should consider, because we are a very educated, and as we've heard from the audience members, big lovers of the arts, right? And I think we also heard that the school is looking to build a new high school, specifically because they do not have necessarily the auditorium space or the gym space in the middle school, right? And so we see how our projects might really serve the schools in some way. So I think that in many ways, this decision is very much within our oversight and serving the community. This is my perspective. Like I said, I'm not here to jam it down anyone's throat. I think this is something that does deserve to go before the voters. This, these are questions of vision, questions of, you know, the voter's ability to pay, and only the voter can truly determine that. I certainly do not want to prevent that from, from taking place. And so that's where I sit, is I see that long-term, this could truly bring some economic development to this community and to build our tax base, which will only benefit the residents in this community. It's something that I, for a long time, have been saying, I've heard other councillors say over the years, that we need to develop our commercial tax base, right? That we are very heavy residential, and this is a way to do that. And yes, will it require some upfront investment? Yes, and that's where the voters have a say, right? When they go to the voting booth, are we going to, first of all, make this a possibility, and second of all, are we truly going to trigger it to vote on that project? And that all depends, of course, on the legislature.
So I, I heard what you said, and I agree in concept of a lot of it, but the, the recreation facility, just like the penny for paths, I think that's something that, that the city is enormously interested in trying to, you know, to provide for the community, right? And that's an internal South Burlington, pretty much only, I mean, it will serve other people that end up using the facility if they're from outside the city, as we heard from that one gentleman, right? But probably, but to start with, that's, that's for the city and for our recreation uses. So that's a great asset to have, right, I think. So I think, I think that is, that meets your criteria, I think. The performing arts center, I understand your, your position on that. It seems like it's less so, but it is an economic attraction, right, for, for the area. And so I, I hate for South Burlington to be the eight percent sales tax town, but if it were to be a...
We're one of four going forward with it, apparently.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that the minute that it gets approved by the legislature, or if the other ones sniff it, or they're thinking about it, they're going to be right in on it as well, right? And so it's going to be South Burlington, Williston, Colchester, and whoever else jumps on board, right? And there might be more, right? So going to eight. The question is, what are they going to want to spend their one percent on, right? You know, so my, my sister lives in Canada, right, and, and, you know, Canadian sales tax is pretty high, and it's divided between provincial and federal. But a lot of that tax is used to, is used for healthcare, right? So the question's, when you go to pay a tax, you have to ask the question, what is it being used for, right? First of all, if the, if the taxpayers are given the opportunity to vote on whether or not to approve the levy of the tax, which is then predicated on whether the voters approve a project that could use that tax, right? It's a two-stage affair, plus you have the, you have the legislature to approve and the governor's side, et cetera, right? So there are many chances for this one percent to never actually be, you know, to be levied at all, right? But there also is a good chance, because we have plans, right? We have plans to do things. So I, I agree with him about the, the rooms and meals. I, that's, I have no problem with the one percent rooms and meals. It's the one percent sales that's, that's kind of stuck right, right here, because it's going to kick all those other towns to go looking for their one percent as well, and then we're going to have an eight percent sales tax.
For a limited amount of time.
Which won't affect clothing or food, right? It won't. Yeah, I understand that.
So I, I think, I think we can't look to what Burlington might do with Memorial Auditorium, from everything I've read, and that's all I know is...
They're not doing anything right now.
If they're as indecisive with that as they have been with the Moran plant, that's not going anywhere for another decade, for God's sake.
There's no performance at either spot right now.
But they own it, and it's municipally-owned.
So they own the Moran plant, too, don't they?
Millions and millions of dollars to renovate those things.
They don't own a spot, besides the school district's own.
Well, I think the arts group has a spot in mind. I don't know if that's public knowledge yet.
I haven't been presented any of that.
But it's definitely not on the school property. But I think they have a spot in mind that's in proximity, immediate proximity to city center, restaurants and, and the like. I don't like taxes at all. I mean, I bumped into a resident of South Burlington in the grocery store yesterday. You know, he's lived here, they've lived here for forty, fifty years, and I said, what do you think? He said, everything you're doing is great, just don't raise any taxes at all, you know, and that's, so there are certainly people... And I said, but how about the recreational facility? He said, I think that's wonderful. He said, find, find traditional ways to pay for that, no more taxes. He said, I won't vote for anything that has the word tax in it. So we've got definitely two mindsets out there. You know, if we, if we could find a way to fund things like this without taxes, be great, but that's never going to happen. I don't, I don't, I don't see, you know, we're looking in a crystal ball. Where are we going to get, you know, thirteen to fifteen million dollars for a recreational center that generally folks agree that we need?
Millground, as I've spoken to legislators, I don't think they're going to pass this one percent to go to eight percent in South Burlington, but I think the argument is strong for the rooms and meals.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it is, because...
Pass through the legislature.
Because, well, there's perennial pressure on the legislature and probably as much, if not more, this year to raise the rooms and meals tax, the Vermont rooms and meals tax at nine percent. I don't think it's changed since two thousand and one or two thousand and three, somewhere back there, and it's under pressure every year, and it's a battle by the hospitality and tourism industry every year to keep it where it is. And, and I think that battle is going to be there again, and I would tend to think it, we're going to be hard-pressed to have the legislature honestly approve any of these. So as good a job as we might do selling it, and so there's no harm in asking the citizens, do you like the idea or not? Because if they don't, well, then we're not going to the legislature at all.
I think they elected us to really dive into the issues, to study the budget, to do, to spend the time that not everybody can commit. And as I've done so, I cannot vote to move forward before them being the most taxed community in the state. I was elected to study the issues to the best of my ability, to communicate and understand from constituents, and with that responsibility, I'm not going to support anything where we become the most expensive tax community in the state.
Have you seen the real estate taxes in Burlington?
Well, South Burlington's not much cheaper.
Well, South Burlington's a lot cheaper.
A lot cheaper.
It's not cheap.
Well, but we're not the most taxed community in Vermont.
We'll be in local sales if we pass this.
No, I said this earlier, what concerns me about the arts center is we built the state, we built the skating arenas with no city dollars at all. An art center on the same operating platform, in theory, would be built with no tax or city dollars at all. That, that bothers me a bit. You know, if we could do it for ice skating, should be able to do it for the arts, and we put together...
But you had the land. You did have the land.
Well, they may have the land, too.
Well, hope that.
That's, no, not our land.
I know.
But they may have private land.
That would be wonderful.
That's...
You've heard something I haven't heard.
I, I don't think there's a, you know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a plan that says this can be done without, without funding help. You know, we built the ranks with private fundraising and a, and a loan. You know, in theory, an art center would happen the same way. Of course, the recreational facility is different. It's, it's totally for city purposes and city-owned. I can't think of how else we'd pay for that, can you?
Property taxes.
Well, we could do that, too. We could do the same thing as the penny for paths, and just ask for property taxes. We're kind of, we're stuck. We've got some great ideas and no way to pay for them. I don't know what to do.
What I'm hearing is we're a bit stuck here.
Yeah, we are.
Because there are two councillors a little bit hesitant, and definitely hesitant with the sales, and two councillors that are willing to put it before the community, and I see the time, too. How about we take a truly five-minute break? I will gavel in five minutes. Just to think about it, you can go out and discuss, and we'll come back after everyone's had a little break.
Yeah, we can do that.
More than two of you together at a time.
Yeah, we really should continue the discussion, open session, though, so...
All right, we are now resuming our discussion of this item. It is, oh, item thirteen, no less, with the warning of the two thousand nineteen Annual City Meeting ballot, including two articles that would require a charter change. And let us continue our discussion. This was on the agenda for approval. As we heard, the language needs to be determined by the end of the week if we decide to go ahead with it. We also know that if we don't decide to go ahead with it, that the legislature won't see it this year.
That's exactly well-stated. Andrew is, Andrew is going to clean up the language based on the various pieces of input that he's had, and that's going to become much more clear. The question becomes, do we do this or do we not do it?
Right.
And I'm, I'm totally on the fence, quite honestly. I hate taxes. I, I'm more in favor of a sales tax than rooms and meals tax.
Why?
Why? Because I've been in the hospitality and tourism industry for forty years.
Our residents already pay property taxes, so sales tax is just we're going to hit them more, where rooms and meals are going to be more of the tourists that aren't paying the property tax.
Well, no, the rooms, yes, the meals, no. Most of the meals are consumed by, by promoters.
I think I buy more meals than I buy things and stuff.
Yeah, exactly, see?
Just, just, you know, I mean...
So I don't know, we either leave them, leave them all in, or we, or we, or we don't do this at all. It's kind of where I'm at.
I'm fine with not doing it at all.
I would agree with David.
And, and I'm fine with doing it or not doing it. What you're, what you're thinking?
Well, I, I'm trying to think, it would be, you know how every time we go forward with the budget, you know, we say on a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar house, it's like, you know, two hundred and twenty dollars or eighty-five dollars and then a hundred and...
No, it's thirty-something.
Whatever it is, you know, for whatever, whether it's penny for paths or whatever it is, right? So can anybody, has anybody taken a stab at trying to quantify for the, the average South Burlington, you know, household, what a one percent rooms and meals and sales would actually impose on them? I mean, can we, can we take a swag at that?
I don't think we have access to that information.
I don't know if anybody tracked that information.
Personal budget. I mean, you know, what, if you think back over the course of a year, how many meals... I mean, you know, if you think back over the course of a year, how many meals do you buy in South Burlington? What's the average price of the meal, multiply by 1%? I mean, if I eat out, if I eat out once a week, right, and sometimes I eat in Burlington, not South Burlington, and sometimes I eat in Williston, let's say it's half, so let's say it's 25 times I eat in South Burlington, and depends if I've got my teenagers with me. I think it's real expensive. But let's say, let's say it's 25 times, and let's say it's 50 bucks, right? 50 bucks, right, average, let's say, you know? So, you know, 1% of that, right? Which is 50 cents?
50 cents.
50 cents. So am I willing, and that's just for meals, okay? When I buy things, I mean, boy, I could tell you the things that I, you know, I hit the mall a couple times for cards, you know, but there's a lot of clothing that I buy.
Clothing's not subject to the tax.
That's why I'm telling you, is that, you know, it's about those things that are not clothing and not food. And I'm thinking that, you know, except for cars, if we wanted to tax new cars, have we considered that? No, new car purchases and leases. But we're not talking about that.
Well, the purchase and use tax is still 6%.
I'd rather look into license plate tolling, so that you don't have tolls, you just have pictures of the license plate, and assess them before you register.
Well, you've already got the Bluetooth traffic sensor, you might as well just like...
Do it down south.
But getting back to a serious nature, though, on a rooms and meals tax, Tom, other than the Hilton Downtown, all the large meeting and conference space in the Chitney County is in South Burlington, with the exception of the Expo, which doesn't have hotel rooms. And so when you put a rooms and meals tax on, and the Doubletree, let's say, takes a conference that's worth half a million bucks, then 1% is costing them, well, 5,000 bucks. That can be a turning point between, we're going to Vermont or we're going to New Hampshire, for example.
The difference is, those people aren't property taxpayers, so they're not paying for the roads that they're using. Whereas the residents, they're already property taxpayers, they're paying for the roads, and you hit the, use the sales tax, you're hitting them again.
No, I understand what you're saying too, but if we lose just a little bit of that meeting and conference business, then we're really, then we're really doing a disservice to our economy. And we shouldn't be doing that either. There are good reasons not to do any of this, and there are reasons to do it, because, gee, we want a recreational facility in town, and we don't have any other way to pay for it other than property taxes. And maybe we don't do this, and we look at the rec facility and say, "Okay, citizens, you want a 1% for pass, how bad do you want recreation? It's totally up to you." And put that back on the ballot next time around, not this time, and see if they want it. And from the art center perspective, which would be a fabulous economic driver for the community, say to those folks, "It's great, you gotta figure out how to pay for it." That that's not city money, the arenas weren't city money, and they've been a smashing success for 23 years.
And don't forget the Affordable Housing Committee, that also wants a penny.
So...
So we're talking about our tax rate, our property tax rate, soon to be up at the level of Burlington.
Not really. We're, I mean, we are...
If we keep adding a penny...
For the people I know, we're about half of, half of all of the comparable properties in Burlington. And so we got a long ways, we're not gonna do that.
The city municipal...
But I don't know what to do on this.
The city municipal tax rate increase for next year was, the city part was 2.8-something plus penny for pass.
2.84.
The total was 3.?
The increase is, the increase in the tax rate is 2.84 over what's already been approved.
Right.
Including the penny for pass.
So that's gonna be about $100 on an average home, am I correct?
That's the total?
$49, I think, on an average home.
I thought the budget was 2.84%, and then the penny for pass on top of that.
But the penny for pass is already approved, so it's a 2.84% on top of that. It's just that what got approved back in August doesn't take effect until July 1st.
So, but the total municipal property tax increase over last year is gonna equal...
1.46 cents.
Okay, but as a percentage increase...
For the budget. And I think just over 2-something with the penny for pass.
I think...
I just ran some roughness. You said that an option would be to pay for it out of the property tax. So just to put, if you took the rooms and meals itself, which generates about a million dollars a year...
The current 1% we get.
Correct.
And we get another...
If you added, if you took that away and said, "Let's put that on the property tax", on the average home, that's $114 a year increase.
Nobody's talking about that. We're not talking about getting rid of the recurrent rooms and meals.
I'm just saying, if you...
If we were to say, "Let's put it in our property tax rate"...
Yeah, that's just the rooms and meals part of it. So this is a way to spread that cost out, to try to make a project affordable.
And that's why I support moving forward with the rooms and meals for parity with Burlington. We serve the greater Burlington market, and there, these people are generally not paying property taxes. But I also like your other idea, Dave, which is just put a pause on this, explore it further, understand the cost of the rec center, and figure out the feasibility.
And sales tax, Tom, how much do we get per year in sales tax?
I think it was 3.4 million for both.
Yeah, it's 3.7 million for both, and the rooms and meals is about a million of that.
If we put, let me just, 1% on the sale, on the property tax, on the average home, which is what, 330,000 bucks? Is that...
One cent on the property tax is about $34.
Is that how much?
On the average home, $34.
And the average home costs 300 and something, right?
Yeah, 337, I think it is.
So my take on that with the rec facility was that, okay, for 1%, we can build a rec facility, just like we did, talked about penny for pass, and it's gonna be retired in X number of years, and for that, you get a facility that you can, if you wanna go jogging every single day of the year, you can do that for 34 bucks for the whole year. If you wanna participate in open basketball, or whatever it is, whatever's not charged a fee for by the rec department, you can knock yourself out 364 days a year, if it's closed Christmas Day. And for that, you're paying 34 bucks, and let people make that decision.
Well, just to compare apples to apples, though, Dave, you're talking almost a million dollars that you're generating by the rooms and meals tax. The $34 is not generating that much.
Yeah, how much does that generate?
One cent?
Yeah, one cent on the tax rate.
So about 1/3 is, 1/3 as much.
If we finance this over 30 years...
It'd be over $100 a year on the average home.
So maybe that facility too needs some private fundraising to bring the price, you know, under control. I don't know.
You were on that committee, I thought, the fundraising, the...
We have, we have kind of not done anything, because we started between 2 and 3 million, and now we're up to 15 million. And exactly what direction a committee would go, kinda depends on what the plan is. So we're not, we're not there yet.
The back-of-napkins that I think you're looking for is if we finance...
The what that I'm looking for?
The back-of-the-napkins calculations, I think you're looking for, for a $20 million rec facility.
No, 13 million.
Okay, but let's just do the 20 million, which is the numbers that we were presented last time.
No, that wasn't 20 million, 15 was the option two.
Then there were the soft costs.
Yeah, so the soft costs. Let's just use 20, and then it's even easier. I think you're looking at $600,000, $900,000 a year in debt service, which is 2 to 3 pennies, which is, with your calculations, between 60 to 90 bucks, in that range, or less.
To be quite honest, if we're gonna take it in this direction, I'm gonna say I'm even more for this tax, because if we just keep adding pennies to our tax rate, right, and we're adding that to the budget that we have to put forward to the voters, we are subjecting this city to potentially repetitive, just like we've seen, right, repetitive elections, repetitive, right, voting days in order to get a vote passed. I think we need to say, is your appetite up to this? Here is the vision, is your appetite up to this? Just like we did with the penny for pass. I really, I hesitate before...
On this, on this article right here.
Yeah, and I think that because we have an art center that is truly gonna be serving not only the region, but potentially, you know, out-of-state and out-of-country visitors, that this is something that should look beyond the property tax rate. And for the recreation center, that to me, I have less of a sense...
You've got a greater fashion for the art center than you do for the arts center.
No, but I, just from the man who came last time, who said that we would be able to countywide really use this recreation center, that's when I was like, aha, now that makes sense, right? So that's when it finally came and kind of, you know, cemented in my mind that that does make sense, to look countywide, and how do we do that? Is through this kind of tax structure.
So let me, let me ask, can I, you wanna go?
I was just gonna say, to your other point, my back-of-the-napkin sketches, or calculations on how much this would increase a local, 1% local sales option, I think that would raise like $200 to maybe up to $400, depending on how much. But I did my personal finances, I think I spent about $200 in local sales option. Back-of-the-napkins. It might be less, might be more, but we're still in that same ballpark for what we would pay for a recreation facility, we'd just be paying for it through local sales option. So if it's $100 or $200 in additional local sales option, or if it's less than $100 in property taxes for a rec center, I just don't wanna open the floodgates to fund projects that I would end up paying for. I'm not going anywhere, I'm married to this city, I'm gonna be here for 30 years. I just don't wanna open up these tax revenue streams to pay for projects that I think are outside the scope of our essential services. But I already made my piece.
What I'm gonna suggest is, we've been around this issue several times, and, you know, some of us are decided. Tim's been quiet for the last five minutes, who knows if he's incubating something? If you are, please feel free. But I would suggest that we just have an up or down vote.
I wanna just ask Tom and Kevin, who put a lot of time into this so far, how do you go, what's your instincts as city management, on what's the most logical, equitable way to go to look at these, I hate to put you guys on the spot, but I will, ways to go to, you know, to get to the future where we'll have a rec center? And as I said, the art center concerns me, because I think that should be built in the same financing format that we built the arenas. So I'm not convinced, but I'm working on the rec center.
We have to put that before the voters.
That will go before the voters in its own right, if it gets there.
That's right. That's a valid point. What do you guys, I just...
Well, we're not, you guys set policy.
We know.
It's not our, it's not our thing to advise someone something like this.
But you have opinions.
But you floated this, right?
Right.
Yeah.
This came from staff, this came from staff, Dave.
But guidance from council, we have given you guidance for these projects.
You asked how to pay for these things, our recommendation was to look at the local option tax. Our friends across the street, when they're done with master planning and visioning, are gonna come back to the community with a plan for the schools, which is gonna increase, which is gonna call for an increase in the residential, in the property taxes, because they have no other funding mechanism available to them. And in order to try to avoid a competitive climate between city and school over who gets to the property taxpayer first, and in deference to the need across the street and the interests of the public to support our schools, we looked into the local option tax. Local option tax authority rests here, but it doesn't get triggered unless the public votes for the projects. And if the public doesn't like a project, and they won't vote for it, the tax isn't actually triggered. This is just the authority to do it. On the other hand, if they vote to support a project, be it recreation, be it a pedestrian path across the interstate, then you'll have the reading of the voters as to what they wanna support by way of public infrastructure. I would make an argument that both of these facilities we're talking about, and the bridge, will lead to greater economic growth in the city of South Burlington. It's about quality of life, it's about trying to keep our young people here through expanding the public infrastructure that makes the quality of life and the reason to live here stronger. And a lot of people are here because of the environment, and the outdoors, and the, and those aspects. But there are people here who would also value indoor recreation facilities, would value being able to walk safely across the interstate, would value an arts facility. And so in order to not be stagnant, you have to continue to provide the types of things that the public wants in by way of public amenities. And I think the two committees coming forward with these two plans spent a lot of time talking about those things, and why they would be important for the city's economic future and cultural future. So when staff was asked, you know, "How do we pay for this?", we went to the local option tax as the way to do it. It is not, it is gonna be a heavy slog in the legislature to get this through. Both taxes, actually, the rental car fee and the local option tax. But rather than compete with the schools over precious pennies on the property tax, our recommendation was to go to this tax.
That was extremely well-stated, I appreciate that. Let me just ask one question before I forget, as I've been staring at this. Andrew, this says, "In the city, subject to sales, rooms, meals, and alcoholic beverages." Is this a package? If they approve one, they gotta approve them all? Or could we say, "Sales and/or rooms, and/or meals, and/or alcoholic beverages", and that way we could ultimately take our choice if we wanted to put something to the voters? I'm serious.
I think that's the way it reads, but I don't think you can break up rooms and meals.
He says, I mean, this implies that it's sales and rooms and meals, right?
Why couldn't we break up rooms and meals? We could put 9% on rooms, and we could put 10% on rooms and leave the meals at 9%.
The way I would read, I hadn't considered this, but the way I would read it is the city council may impose this tax, so it would have the authority to divide it up...
We would.
Among that, and the rates is up to 1%.
Yeah, I'm, you know...
Oh, so that gives us leeway there.
That gives us some leeway there.
Are rooms and meals, though, under 1?
At the state level, yes.
The tax heading, but the state collects this too.
Right, the state will be administering this tax, so it would make a lot of sense to keep it connected with the way...
But we could disconnect it if we wanted to.
I think other communities have done that, have, yeah, have excluded certain...
Because the overwhelming bulk of rooms taxes are paid by out-of-staters, the overwhelming bulk of restaurant taxes are paid by locals.
So I think you're reading it correctly, Dave. The council, at a later date, could decide to do rooms and meals, alcohol, or sales independently. It doesn't have to come as a package.
Fine, that's all I wanted to know. Tom, in total agreement and appreciation for what you've said, but understanding we could take our choice, and understanding and believing in what Kevin explained that, and spoke about so well, is that we need to keep the economy of the city moving forward. We need to look at every possibility, so recognizing that this is hardly a done deal by a long, long, long shot, let's go along with this, put it in front of the voters and see what happens. If it gets turned down in South Burlington, well, then we're, then this isn't gonna work, and we move on to the next thing. So let's do it and go, but that doesn't mean that I disagree with anything you said.
Is that a motion?
And we could ultimately leave sales out of it if we wanted to make the decision. And you probably didn't know that before I asked the question.
Is that a motion, David?
Sure.
Can I ask a question first? So when it says alcoholic beverages, is that part of restaurant sales of alcoholic beverages?
No, they're taxed at 10% already, they're taxed a percent higher.
So this applies to a sale of wine and beer in a grocery store?
No, I don't know if alcoholic beverages at the state level is a tax on wine, beer, and hard liquor, or if it's just the extra, 10% is just on hard liquor.
When I go to Hannaford and buy my 12-pack of IPA, is it gonna be 1% higher? Cuz there's a, it's actually, alcoholic beverages are double taxed, right? They're taxed by the state, and then they're taxed again at sales, and that's a new thing that just went in a few years ago, right? Was the extra, cuz you, huh?
I don't, I'm not clear on it, but I don't, I don't think so.
Does anybody know what the tax rate is on a case of beer in South Burlington? Is it 6%?
Will you find out later tonight?
I'm way past that, I'm way past that. I'm just curious, no, cuz I'm just curious, does it mean alcoholic beverages within a, you know, a restaurant? Or, you know what I mean, a beer at a restaurant, or a beer in a grocery store?
I'd have to look at the statute.
You don't know? I have a feeling it's both.
I think it's just restaurants.
You think it's just restaurants?
I think if you buy, if you sit down for dinner in a restaurant and order an alcoholic beverage, it's 10%.
Yes, I think you're right.
And I don't know if that includes wine and beer, or if it's just hard liquor.
Oh, no, it'd be wine too.
It's all, yeah, it's alcoholic beverages, right.
Then it's all, but I don't think that applies in the store, I'm not sure. Anyway, that's the motion with the underst, with the statement that I hate taxes, but let's see what happens.
Right, I totally agree with you.
So do you have a second?
So is this for both of these articles? A motion?
Oh, the rental cars too?
The half percent. One at a time, all right?
One at a time.
So just on the first article, you made a motion, all right?
With all the changes?
Well, I wanted to maybe go through them after I get a second, if that's possible.
I'll second.[1780.62]
All right, so, I like your first one or more specific, okay, but just looking between the two articles, Dave, this chapter, "Transactions and Involving," that's very similar to the article for the rental cars.
Where are you reading?
Where you, you wanted to change "Transactions" to "Purchases," you wanted "Involving" to be "Subject to," and you wanted to say "This Chapter of the Charter," the language in this charter language is very similar to the charter language for the second article that we're gonna be looking at in a few minutes.
Meaning what?
There's "Involving," there's "Transactions," and that we don't have this charter.
I was just trying to be more clear, if Andrew thinks it's more clear the way it was, he can leave it the way, well, I don't care, I was just making suggestions, the one change that he did make is down below, where I had a concern about with that, within that 10 years from first voter approval.
Yes.
He is adding another section, a new section two, and section two will become section three.
Perfect.
And the new section two will explicitly describe what I thought was confusing, and that was the more important piece.
Perfect.
And then encourage economic growth, I think, instead of accelerate.
That's fine.
So there.
I would also, the "all" in what is now "One, Service and Retire All Debt," I would say "Any Debt," because that suggests that there might not be any debt, the "any" suggests that the voter will be able to say yea or nay to that, the "any" is, either it's there or it's not there, okay, it's just.
Whatever.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, those are just suggestions from my perspective, how I read it, whatever the expert over here thinks is gonna work best, is fine.
Okay, and I'm fine with the "Specific" for "Specific Financing Capital Projects," but the, under the current two, which will become the three, specifically, that doesn't have any, any sense to it, because it would be referring to the voter-approved, which is a given.
Well, I think he said voter-approved.
Right, which is a given, and I really do like the "such as" with the specific projects, because it gives us a finite, right?
As opposed to, for example?
As opposed to, it's gonna be whatever, I think it's, this council is owning this, right, and this council is saying, these are the projects that we have identified.
Whatever, whatever you want, I'd say "For Example," and then put a period at the end, and then it's still just those four, and take out my et cetera there.
Tim, do you have a preference for "such as," or for?
I think the "such as" is okay the way it is.
Then fine.
Cause it reports on all the potential.
Perfectly fine.
All right, all right, so we have a first and a second, all right, all in favor?
Is there any other discussion?
Is there still more discussion?
Yeah, yeah, so the blank spot where it says, "by the voters on," so, is it like catch 22, they, you don't know when you'll, so as soon as they, will this be filled in on the ballot, with the date of the ballot?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I was like, how do you know what date they're gonna pass, if they don't pass, they're passing this date that, you know, it's.
Well, it's only gonna be the voters on Spear Street.
No, no, I'm just saying, the date wasn't filled in, but that's because we don't know if it's gonna actually be on the ballot, so which ballots are gonna be in, if it's gonna be on?
We got in Clark's.
Clark's fifth, oh, right, okay.
But I think it really is our duty to tell voters, this is in their court now, this is for them to determine, right, I really think that's important, this is not.
Right.
Being imposed, this is a question we're putting to them.
If it was, if this was a vote and it was a done deal, I'd say we had a long ways to go before we figured this out, but this is the very beginning of something that might work and very possibly won't work, but we may as well find out sooner rather than later, so we can move on to the next plan if this doesn't work.
But it's very similar to TIF, where we're really saying, this is now for the voters to determine, I really think it's important for us to stress that, all right, we have a motion and a.
One more language clarification, on the, kind of the sunset provision, the new B2, we talked, there was some discussion about having it be 12 years or 10 years from the date of adoption, or ratification, is there any preference on between those two?
And this is just for taking up new projects, one of these four?
Yeah, so the option is, is you could have a language that it's, it needs to be a project approved within 10 years from the date of the first project approved, or 12 years from the date of adoption of the charter amendment.
Let's go 10 years, decades, nice and clean, let's do it.
Tim?
So, approve it within 10 years from the first voter approval.
He's gonna change the wording.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
10 years is good.
He gives them 10 years to start a project, and then use this money.
10 years.
Yeah.
Next.
All right, we're good, okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
All right, so it's three to one, passed, and now we're gonna move on to the second article.
I tried to convince you by saying that sales could be in or out, but that didn't do it, that's all right, I totally appreciate where you're coming from.
We don't all have to agree.
Oh, but the fact is, I think we all do agree, just not to the point with how we're gonna go about making those decisions, that's fine.
All right, and now we have Article Four, City Charter Amendment Number Two, and what we have is a half percent tax on those transactions in the city involving short-term car rentals, okay, and we have discussed this?
The language doesn't have to be changed, we didn't propose any.
Just to the half cent, but otherwise, we didn't change anything.
So I move that we approve this city amendment charter as proposed, for inclusion on the March 5th ballot.
With the half percent.
With the half percent, yes, this document that we received.
Not what's in the packet.
The latest one, the one tonight.
Not what's in the packet, but the half percent.
Point, point, .5%.
Very good, is there a second?
I can second that.
All, any discussion? No. All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, I don't think so, I think that was unanimous, 4-0, all right.
And now you have to approve the entire ballot, right?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the full.
And that's in our.
As amended.
Well, that's, that's.
That's in our, our.
No, that's, that is this.
Yes.
So you got Article.
The first two articles.
Yeah, the first two articles.
Right, but I think that was in our packet, all right, so.
I'll approve the total ballot as amended, a motion to approve the total ballot as amended.
But on principle, I just don't want to support the ballot language to raise local sales.
Article one and Article two.
Should I say nay on this, or are we just voting on Article one and Article two now?
Do we say Article one and Article two, Dave? Or no, do we have to do the whole ballot?
It's no big deal.
Yeah, it's just to warn the first two articles.
Okay.
Okay, for sure, just to warn the first two articles.
All right, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think that was unanimous as well, all right.
So is it now, Andrew will, will make the appropriate changes that you've asked for, and you can sign it tomorrow night at the steering committee.
Very good.
Is this gonna give a proxy? Well, it has to be signed by the end of the week?
Uh, yeah, probably so.
By the end of the week, I'll come in and sign it.
I'm gonna check with Donna tomorrow and make sure we got that date.
All right, moving on to item number 14, thank you, that was a good discussion, and I think the voters can appreciate that we do not take this lightly, and I hope that they also hear that we are truly putting this in their hands, and of course, will ultimately be up to the legislature on whether or not we can again put it in the voters' hands, right?
That's it, it's got a long ways to go.
Right, all right, item number 14, and thank you very much for being such patient people, consider and possibly approve a request by representatives of the O'Clair family related to family-owned parcels of land and their exclusion from lands covered by interim zoning bylaws. And we are here with Jennifer and Robert, thank you, and just give your names for the record, please.
Jennifer Morway.
Robert Morway.
And I don't really, I don't really know how much you want to begin, because I've sent on a timeline.
Yep, we have it.
I've sent on maps and lots of information, but essentially, we are just requesting that the properties, the O'Clair properties originally, I don't even know how to say that, but originally the O'Clair properties be exempt from the interim zoning, all these contracts related to the sale are all intertwined. Again, I really think this is more of, I've sent so much stuff out, it's more, does anyone have questions on this, or, how do you want me to?
Representatives from Bread and Butter Farm, are you here to speak on behalf of and support of any of their requests, or are they, are you here for this topic item?
Yeah, we're here to listen and.
Okay, just wondering if you had another, other perspectives, because it's not in our packets, on the timeline, and, okay, so no prepared remarks, okay.
Could we be introduced to the youngest member of the audience?
Don't wake her, don't wake.
Mascot.
Don't wake her.
So here's, if we gotta start on this, here's my thinking, you spoke with us last week, you sent a lot of information, which I took about 15 minutes to go through, and the map was helpful, so thank you, and I think your point is logical, and personally, it's okay by me and makes sense, so I'll make a motion that we exempt the O'Clair property from the interim zoning, and that we.
I'll second.
And can we check with legal, because last time, we used a term that had a specific legal definition, which is why we're here again, so if we could please hear from our, from our staff regarding the meaning of the term, "O'Clair Property."
Well, there's a, there's also a potential issue, I don't think that the council can amend the interim bylaws by, well, tonight, and so what could be done is an amendment to, I don't think any language in the interim bylaws needs to change, just the map showing, if the idea is to add lands to the exempt areas that are shown on the map that's referenced in the interim bylaws, then that could be prepared, and the process of amending interim bylaws could proceed with.
Tell us the process, please, Amanda.
So there would have to be a warned public hearing, and thereafter, the council could then decide whether to approve that amendment, but then, you know, as before, once it is published, once the warning is published, then that.
Takes effect.
Yeah, that would apply to.
I, we asked, or you guys went over this, when, before you enacted interim zoning, and I don't remember honestly if it was you or Andrew that were the attorneys speaking, but one of the councilmen specifically asked this question before, if we had to remove land from this, do we have to go back and do all these public meetings and so on and so forth, and the answer was, no, if you wanted to remove land, it wasn't an issue, if you wanted to add additional land that needed to go into, then you had to go through all these meetings, like it was very specifically spoken about on that meeting.
But I don't think it precluded just a public hearing for us to truly announce to the public and give the public a chance to respond that we are exempting your property, what I believe the answer had to do with was actually going back and nullifying our interim zoning and restarting the process, we wouldn't have to do that, what we would have to do is have a process where we simply, you know, legally add an exempted piece of land, and if that process is a public hearing, it's, I know it means another step for you, it means us putting notice in the paper, but it doesn't mean having to go through a series, it means just simply making a public hearing, going through those very specific steps.
Could this be accomplished by the next city council meeting in February?
Two weeks to have public notice.
And I can clarify, that I think the, that issue came up in the context of the time between when there's a warning, a warned, proposed ordinance, and when it's actually adopted, because the idea was to make it as broad as, to, it was easier to basically exempt land between the time that it's warned and when you actually adopt the ordinance, than it was to take land out of the exempt areas, but now that it's actually been adopted, there's an ordinance.
Yeah.
And you're proposing an amendment.
Okay.
We've gotta do whatever is legal, so my motion, my motion can change to reflect whatever is appropriate to move this process forward.
A quick question, I mean, we had, we were under the assumption after the meeting that we were exempt, and from an email, as you saw with the paper and whatever else, so that kind of gave a little bit of a window for what you're saying now is enacted, and that's kind of what we're going back to say.
Interim zoning is always messy, it's, what I understand of interim zoning, you get these ambiguities where there's people uncertain about their property, so, I'm sorry you got that impression, but I'm, I think we can move forward with the exemption in the legal manner, and that'll be a public warning from how far from now?
It's.
It's too late for Thursday's paper, but it would be next week.
Right.
And then you could move ahead, is what I'm assuming, if it's, then, if then you are exempt a week from Thursday.
Should be warranted.
You, could the moral ways move ahead, Amanda?
Yes, once the pub, sorry, once the, the hearing on the proposed change has been warned, then it would apply.
Apply.
That's a week from Thursday.
So if something is enacted between now and then, are we saying that?
Nothing will be.
I'm just saying, if something was, then, okay.
So, and I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, so a week from Thursday, we would be, it would be warned, and then it's the next council meeting after that, or we don't have to do that?
A week from Thursday, it's warned, so it is now being applied.
Once the warning is published in the paper, and the paper is printed and published, then it takes effect.
So you can move ahead, and we will hold our hearing, you can be here just because it's your property and you care, but, except for unforeseen, you know, meteorites hitting this council chamber, right?
Right.
And again, it's just, it's just the, what acreage of the bridge?
So it's fif, the tax bill says 15 plus or minus, whatever, so it's 15 acres, and then Heather's piece, which is, wait, 2.6.
2.6.
Point 2, so point, .3-ish.
Yeah, they're like right across the street from each other, too.
Megan?
Yes.
You're okay with it?
I am, yes.
We're all on board, so let's just.
The other option is for you to come before us, which would then put another $275 fee, which I just don't see the need for that, so.
Get this done.
Amanda, what?
I'm just looking for a plan, sorry.
I still, to be honest, I don't know what property is your 15 acres and what, yes, please.
So.
I would love to understand.
Okay, so, this is the old, this is the old map.
Okay, there's another, there's another newer map?
Actually, this way.
Show me, show me.
Oops.
I don't think it's before that.
So it's.
Is it the hilltop, is that what we're talking about?
That's what I had understood.
Where that stretches, where the old building is.
This is where it gets confusing because the, what was originally for sale and what, like, we ended up going under contract for, we're a little bit different, but this was originally what you guys saw in October for first time, and this is what was sold. So this is Heather's.
2.6 acres.
Yep, and then this is the 15 acres.
Okay.
This is the hilltop, the tall.
So this, is this?
So this right here, if you look at them this way.
Mm-hmm.
They're very different, so this lot originally was supposed to be all of that, but this one was only supposed to go to like here.
All right, all right, well, this map is helpful.
So, why is there this delta? Because we ended up, so basically, in order to make things, everything go through, this originally was 16.8 acres, that we were under, we were working with another, with a neighbor, trying to purchase, we had been working on it for a couple of years with Paul Connor, and the issue was, he kept saying we just needed to do a boundary line adjustment because they owned the land next to it, that couldn't occur, it had to go through subdivision, but because it's part of the V, or the natural residential, whatever, once it was subdivided, you lost all your TDRs, unless you could place exactly where you wanted them to be, but since we weren't under contract with Bread and Butter, or any, we didn't finalize any contracts at that point, they couldn't say where they wanted theirs to be, they couldn't say where they wanted their TDRs to be, and they would have all had to be back-to-back, so it would have had to have had the.
have all had to be back to back, so it would have had to have had the, theirs here, and Bread and Butter's here, and nobody wanted to do that.
So in, in the three parcels that were, that were sold, right, with Dirt Capital in the city and VLC, VLT, which map is correct?
This one.
This is the one that was actually the contract, okay.
You guys are seeing this, 'cause this was originally what went up for sale that you originally saw.
So this, so it's this little piece here that wasn't included, and then this piece, right?
And this one, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make for sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
So, focus on the record hearing.
All right.
Hearing should be one for the nineteenth.
February?
Then we'll place it in the paper on the thirty-first.
February nineteenth, okay, at what time would you suggest, seven or seven-thirty?
I'm trying to think, we have something else at night, we would, let's do it at, I think there might be another hearing that night.
I think you told Paul eight o'clock, because Ron's here, and you asked him to.
Oh, yeah, Ron's here, eight o'clock.
Is when Ron's gonna?
No, Ron's gonna be up first, at seven-thirty.
So eight o'clock is a better time?
So.
And that's giving us enough time with Ron?
Should.
Should?
Ron's our auditor.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll get to know him.
Yeah, all right, so, if you're willing to amend your motion, Dave, okay, it will be published the thirty-first, which is when it becomes applicable, all right?
Fine.
January thirty-first, so to set a public hearing to amend the interim zoning bylaws for February nineteenth at eight P M.
To, to remove the property.
To remove the fif, what's the correct legal term?
To move the fifteen-acre lot that was on the, that is located on the westerly side of Heinzburg Road, that was created last summer, and the.
Two point six, two point?
It's like point two six.
Point two six, point two six.
Acres, that is on the.
East.
Easternly side of Heinzburg Road, almost directly across from the fifteen-acre parcel previously.
Got that, Sue?
Yep.
All right.
Duncan.
All right, we're good on discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you again for letting the city conserve that land.
It's nearly, this is up.
Important, all right, very good, I think we have some other business.
Brief.
Brief, brief, so we have committee reports and a question about financial warrants.
I rescind my request to have a comment about financial reports.
Okay, so we'll pick that up, 'cause I wanna pick up whatever you said to me last year, too, and I'll have to dig that out, and I'm sorry, I can't, it didn't come to me till tonight, so the committee reports, and I think it's important for the public, and if, Amanda and Jennifer and Robert, could.
You guys go outside, Amanda, could you go outside?
Hey, guys, can you go, do it in the hallway?
Amanda?
I'm sorry.
You guys talk in the hallway.
Sit at the tables, thank you, thank you, all right, I think it's really important for the public just to hear regular updates, because just as Tom said, this involves landowners, and so it's important for this to be reported back where we have a camera, and we did have a local reporter, who will, who will catch it. Do you wanna go first, or do you want me to go first for the, for the open space and the TDR I Z committee updates?
I can tell you briefly, TDRs, we were looking at how to establish knowledge about the current state of TDRs, and that included getting kind of a history of TDRs from Amanda, as well as what the current statute, you know, language is like, both in the state and in our LDRs, includes a map of where there are sending areas, and then corresponding receiving areas, so we're just kind of data gathering that information, and a lot of this can be posted to the I Z part of the city website, I was appointed interim chair because Michael's gone until February fourth, I think, and we didn't really wanna have city council as chairs for these committees, so we just did that temporarily, and then he'll be back, we reiterated the fact that analysis and judgment-type communications should not be done over email to, as a group of quorum, right, so, because that is not being, that business is not conducted in the, in, in front of the public, so only agenda item logistics could be communicated with a quorum, and, and I had to reiterate that today, in fact, to a couple people, so that lesson was learned, and so, we're meeting tomorrow night, but I'll be here for the steering committee, I'll be back and forth, and, so the point is to try and understand the history, when they changed the natural resource protected areas, NRP and NRT, how that created then these transfer development rights, and then, we have a listing of the number of TDRs that have been either totally executed, or have options to be executed, and where they came from, and where they are going, potentially, for the ones that are still options, so, so we're just, that's where we're at.
All right, taking inventory, okay, very good. The open space I Z committee, we met, I believe it was last Wednesday, same night, right, was it Wednesday, or Thursday?
We were Thursday.
Thursday, so same night, Thursday, first, we chose the chair, who's Alan Strong, Associate Dean of the Rubenstein School at UVM, and our vice chair.
He was so excited about that.
So are we.
He said, he said to me, what did you get me into? And I said, you're gonna be great, I said, just get it done on time.
I think he's, he's keen on that.
He is very, very good.
I think it's gonna be a very good committee. Our vice chair is Duncan Murdock, and I'm the clerk, so I will be singing your woes soon, Sue, we also talked about how we wanted to proceed, and what we needed in order to, to meet that goal, and so, the goal is to find out, based on the map of South Burlington, and the open spaces that are available, including those that are already city-owned or somehow conserved, and those that are not yet city-owned or conserved in another way, to find out what are the ecological priorities on those lands, and then we would put that up based on our maps, so finding maps was one of the resources that we needed to do, and once we got those maps, and we determined the ecological priorities, we would then put it up with parcels, and that is where the expertise of Bernie Gagnon, who is our representative from the planning commission, comes in, where he'd be able to give us with the planner's eye, well, this parcel, if we, you know, could move it just a little bit, that would free us up to do this, and so really to try to align these ecological areas with parcels in a way that makes sense to a planner's eye, but also ecologically, with ecological integrity, okay? We would not be putting forward any kind of language for bylaws, we would simply be putting forward kind of a perfect case scenario, that then would go forward to the planning commission, and looking, and to the city council, of course, where we would come together with the other work that's being done, and see what compromises need to be made, right, and how we could meet these goals, which might include, you know, amendments to our, our, our regulations, it could include procedure whereby any land that would be put up for sale, which linked to what you were interested in with regard to what Monica Ospey had to say, that the city council would have a hundred and twenty days in which to act and purchase land that we wanted to have conserved, so looking at the different tools that the city could use to meet those conservation goals, would be kind of the end product that we would look forward to, I'm trying to think if there are other things that we said, but I think in general, that's it, I think we also stressed really the importance of making this as, as open and public as possible, we talked about putting some, you know, notes or notices in the other paper, and on the social media networks, simply to let people know this is what we're working on, and so if there are landowners who are interested in, in sitting in on a meeting, that they would be given a heads-up one way or another, is our hope, so, so that's the goal.
That's a really good start.
Yeah, it's a great committee.
Excellent.
Yeah, did you wanna talk about GMT?
Always happy to, so, I will say this, it's a pretty rough time at GMT, we're facing a million-dollar budget shortfall, we just released a press release, and I'm, I'm sorry, but we unanimously voted to raise the municipal assessments this year from three percent to four percent, but I will say that gladly, to the report to this body, our ADA assessments this year went down, so we actually only went up about 1.2 percent, but we are also looking at fare increases, and we are exploring service suspensions for the first time in GMT's history, I feel like I am doing a terrible job chairing the Grain Mountain Transit.
Where's the million deficit from?
So we have been spending down, spending down our reserves over the last three or four years, because the, there are different routes that just haven't been sustainable. Our funding sources have remained constant, but our expenses, as we can all attest to, have gradually been increasing, compounded with declining ridership across the entire nation, so with the declining ridership and other factors, that we lost a stick factor, which was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the federal government, so we are having a special board meeting this coming Tuesday to fully explore and vet our options, and I'm really looking for pathways where we don't have to suspend or cut services that many people count on, and so is the entire board, but just know that I am hard at work, and I'll have a lot more to report after our next meeting, as to where we settle, and if you have issues or questions, a lot of the service suspensions don't affect the urban communities, we're really looking at the rural areas, particularly the seasonal services, which are very expensive and finding drivers and maintaining for just four months, and as well, we're looking at successful routes like the St. Albans Link commuter, which it doesn't make sense to cut, but we have limited options based on how our charter is currently prescribing our assessments. I'm spending a lot of time on GMT these days, I hope I'm representing you guys well, I think I'm doing a terrible job chairing, but I'm trying, and so I will have more to report to you after the next meeting.
Can I, can I give you kind of a, a word that many people, you know, will not like hearing, but you could say it came from me, is UVM convinced me to take public transportation when parking became such a bear?
Yeah.
All right, and that's where it's gotta come down, it's gotta be much more enticing to stand and wait for a bus and get on it, and then realize, hey, this is actually great, right, but it's that atticement, right, where I can get off my bus and get to my office much more quickly than I can from Guttersen, right, where I already have to seek a spot, right?
Making a case for metered parking in South Burlington, right, start charging for parking.
I think, I think you have to make parking less, less enticing, I really think.
Free car on the roads got three or four open seats.
Yes.
I've never seen so much open stock transportation in my life as in the United States of America on every road.
Yes.
So gas prices.
You put people in those seats, you will have less of a traffic problem.
So that's one plus, plus for a gas tax, I gotta say, gas prices correlate to ridership, as gas prices go up.
No, not that ridership bump, when gas went over four to a gallon.
I'm not pushing for a gas tax, I'm just saying that gas prices have been historically low for the last eight years.
Do the end.
Need the technology to solve this problem.
We're working on that, too, so Routhshout is better.
I think, I think really having some kind of relations campaign, you know, with the, with the employers of the state, and saying, how can we work with you so that your employees take the bus, or whatever?
And those are the link rats.
Right.
Right?
Without taking their cars.
We are pushing on multiple fronts, and that is one of them, on the major employers throughout the region that benefit from public transportation, so I'm doing a lot of work for GMT, a lot more work than I originally thought I was gonna be doing, but I hope I'm representing you well.
You're a good man.
Donation of a million dollars.
You guys already, we already gave five hundred thousand dollars this year, so, thank you, it helps the budget.
All right, very good, anything else? I don't think so, I think people are eager.
I'm overeager.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan.